Evening, everybody. It is six thirty and in July twenty-sixth. This is the select board meeting. Meeting. I'd like to read this. The Model Three, whatever. Okay. Perspective? The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We will ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized, minoritized communities, to be welcomed with respect. We ask our committee members and all who are on this grid to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Having said that, I have a public order to have acceptance of the agenda. Seconded by this Congress, all in favor? I already want this to see here. Saying none, we'll move right on to the reports of the town administrators.
Good evening to everybody. We'll start with our COVID data again. Our making data number was twenty-five for this week. Positivity rating over the last fourteen days was six point eight eight. Plumb County was seven point nine six. Statewide, the positivity rating was eight point one seven over the last seven days. Fifty-two individuals in ICU and twenty patients were intubated. So with the exception of Citrus' positivity rating, which has gone down slightly, the numbers are pretty much up across the boards since our last update two weeks ago. The VA five variant is now the most prevalent variant. It is more contagious and adept at getting around vaccines, people with antiviruses. They're still saying we should see the numbers go down, but they're not very slow, so we're hoping to see that. We'll continue to say you're not vaccinated, get vaccinated. If you're not boosted, get boosted. And if you have pre-existing health conditions, you might want to take L-180 or COVID-19. Water update, the reservoir is at minus twenty-seven point seven five, so that is going down. Our average daily demand is at one point eight six nine million gallons a day, which is up almost over two hundred thousand gallons a day from our update two weeks ago. So we have water ban on, a lot of usage is going up. We also have a rated by the Commonwealth as having significant drought conditions in Citrus. As the drought worsens, the water table supply in our wells also drop, lowering the outputs from the wells. The less we get from the wells, the more water we have to put into the water treatment plant. The more water we put into the water treatment plant, the more magnesium we get in the system, the more we should be having groundwater going through the plant going out into the system. The magnesium in the water treatment plant is high. Temperature rises, it will go higher. Our latest magnesium level was point three three parts per billion. The state limit is point three parts per billion. So we will be sending out a notice to all the residents exceeding some magnesium. It will be almost the exact same notice that people get when they have a TPHM exceeds. So that will be going out later this week. We're working with our consultants and DDP to try to come up with a short-term fix. The long-term fix is to build a new water treatment plant with a great sand gulf in the Texas, maybe south of Warren. If you have brown water, please report us in the water department, we do use those as data points. Rainfall over the last seven days was point oh seven inches measured to plan. We still have a water ban in place, handheld only before nine and after five P M. The water department has been issuing warnings up to this week for people violating the ban. We will now start issuing fines. Those fines could be a size three hundred dollars a day for violators of the water ban. We do need people that conserve water. We hope we got some water last night. I went over to three. Wasn't raining where I was, I could see rain further down the highway, so it's had a nice falling. We just did the rain at this point, so we fill our reservoir and our. South Coast, our water contractor this year is on Pine Brook and Westgate. At the last meeting, I informed the board that the legislature had not extended the date for hydro meetings. They didn't make the deadline for that, so hydro meetings are now extended through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-three with the same restrictions that we have on now. Why they don't just say it's permanent, I don't know, but you guys have been extending for not quite another year. A reminder to people with the rise of inflation in gas, Citrus Community Christmas and the Citrus Food Pantry here to help. Citrus Community Christmas, seventy-one, five, four, five, seven, one, nine, eight. The Citrus Food Pantry, seven, eight, one, five, four, five, five, eight, two, seven. Update on two projects. We have received designer applications for both the Pier Forty-four project and for the Lighthouse project. The committees will be reviewing the Pier Forty-four this week, and I will be meeting representatives from the SCOR Commission and some other town departments to do the Lighthouse designer submissions. We are hoping at this point, that via next meeting, we will have contracts for all of those projects going forward for the board approval. Citrus Secretary Harry Brooks, they have their formal housing lottery on our estate. Applications we do yesterday, so we'll wait till after those. Applications lottery. Mark Novak, the designer of our Citrus Athletic Complex, has informed us that the Citrus Athletic Fields Project is recognized by the American Sports Builders Association with a Distinctive Facility Award in the Multi Field category. The project is now a finalist for the Facility of the Year honors. That award will be given out in December. It's in California. I'm not going, just. But I want to thank everybody involved in that project, CTC. Kevin, his department, all the people who worked on that came out great, it's been a lot of use, so we'll see if we can get an award for the Facility of the Year. And finally, what I know everybody's been waiting for, we are scheduled to have our paper starting next week, weather dependent, so we should see people next week starting to work, amazing castings, getting entertainment, we can follow shortly after that. Two big projects on the list, all over the bucket, and Brook Street will be the larger water manor projects. Those will be big projects, we'll let people know when they're coming. Good appropriate, wanting to let the T-Tesna traffic reveal. So that's what I have for tonight. Any questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions for Jim?
I have another question. I just wanted to extend our thanks on the athletic field because everybody in the sport knows that you wrap your arms around that and make sure it goes down the right way. Thank you for that. If it's Facility of the Year, you will send it here. Send it to California.
We know I was going to guess that I have to go accept the award. Not sure at this point.
Thank you. Jim, I know we put place automatic levels to kick in for the next level of water restrictions. What is that next tier? I know, I just thought Kevin just.
Yeah, that's, that's Kevin. I was looking at, but usually it's a complete ban on all outside water, all outside water uses.
Right, but I'm asking what kicks that into effect? So I know we're down twenty-seven inches, so I just.
I'd have to ask Kevin whether he'll back them up, so we tripled the list already. It's based on our water, as opposed to the current, which is based on the basin. I'd have to ask Kevin whether there's a hot number or whether it's, we're at this point, at this point of the year, we need to really start conserving water. I don't think it's that far off, which I'll consider.
Thank you.
A couple things. Jim, can you give an update from Trigall on that project for our next meeting? And also during the meetings, can we get an update on the sewer numbers also? We'll talk about the water, but if we can kind of get, give us some, what's the capacity of the sewer system? I imagine that the drought is going down, but those are just numbers that I think the roll of averages could first look at. And lastly, I just want to repeat what Jim said slowly, because he's said it a hundred times, but we're hearing a lot of complaints about brown water. We've had brown water for hundreds of years. But the reason why we have brown water right now is because our wells, which have filters on them, cannot handle the capacity of water that we're using right now. We're using almost one point eight seven million gallons of water, which means that we have to pump water from the reservoir, which is driven by our three A, which has a lot of magnesium. And we have to process it in the water treatment plant, which is next to the English baseball field. That plant does not filter out magnesiums. So that's what we're literally pumping magnesium water through our system. We can't filter it out when it goes into this system that everybody's using. When we use more well water, the well waters have to focus on the ability. That is one of the main reasons why we're proposing to have funded, actually, new water treatment, because that water treatment plant will filter out magnesiums. So we're hoping that that is the long-term solution for helping to grow our situation this time. Did I forget anything?
I have another question. You said that information about that this was, they said that everybody couldn't just send it out to the residents. How is it being distributed?
It goes off like mail, that's okay. We'll post it on the website.
I was going to say, digitally, it may faster.
It posted on the website also.
Thanks, Kevin.
Michelle, Lorraine, what is last of all, on this slide?
Kevin, while you're here, Laura had a question about the water tiers. And when we're down twenty-seven inches, wouldn't, you know, what DEFCON level are we at right now? When do the restrictions get tighter?
Well, the restrictions have been tighter because of the amount of time the water treatment plant is trying to minimize that, minimize the amount of brown water. It's not necessarily the water levels that are triggering, it's the reaction of the plant, plus we've got issues with chemicals. So that's why I've been going into speculative explorations.
So there's.
The next tier is the question.
Yeah, so.
Is there a specific level in the reservoir that we go to full water, it's just kind of used to.
There is, but it's much further down.
Okay.
It's significantly further down. We had chemical, natural chemical shortages, kalsam dioxide, which was brought up in the last meeting, and, you know, trying to minimize the amount of water that's going out, probably frequent plants to keep the power going online, check these local issues.
No, I mean, we're at the water ban where you can outside water between five and nine. What the board's asking is what triggers the next ban level will go outside water usage.
I would say if it's significant, it's lower for the reservoir, but I would say if our magnesium levels continue to rise with the usage, then we would be looking into want to add any one of the certain bits.
Questions? Do you have a follow-up?
No, I understand, it's a different situation right now. It's triggering, not necessarily with lack. Lack of supplies, well, means.
We have water.
Okay.
So that's interesting that we do have, even though we haven't got to bring them all the time, we do have enough water in the reservoir, but the magnesium level has become higher this system.
We saw that the drought was coming in sooner in, you know, we did respect some official releases. We minimized some, so we can have water and we'll be in this position because we're always worried if we have had a well failure or something to that effect, we need that additional water from the treatment plant.
You have a question, Laura? Thank you. Our first item this evening, it especially goes on the election police details. That's smarter than town clerk.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing?
You're welcome.
As you mentioned, I'm on crisis, new laws, and normally I would call the police officers or, you know, notify the police. I get every details for the elections and town meetings, and I get my list. And they all know I'm the NIAA, and all the government has to be here in the morning to meet and about us, and we go to bring the police machines and the doctor, the clerks to secure it. So now it's in the hands of the select board, and the law is very vague. I call elections on this because of all the town clerks that we chat. And it requires a vote of the select board to write a skin, the law is very vague, but the clerks are having, this is like a template, it's a board, to cover two children's lives. It almost sounded like a beginning of a conference when they discussed this, that every year the select board would have to vote specific police officers to each election, like by name? That was what was intended, that was the intention that we all, it was, it's just an exact, just because you don't know whose bill, how would you know? I wouldn't do that. So anyhow, the executive order that you brought is a template, the template goes across the area areas to get this going, and I think it's broad-based and it covers, I don't know if we can do every year, but I think it's supposed to just.
So how many officers, real officers?
It depends on the election. So for example, with presidential election, usually state elections is three. I have one in the morning that goes over the movie, two over there, one in the parking lot, a traffic, and another one inside. For our president, a big election like a presidential election, where there's more traffic and more lobbying, then they might, they might call somebody to help with traffic at the street, you know, and then that person might be the next starter, and like over the rest of the day, and they still have three. For town meeting, I usually just think two is enough, but sometimes I have to say three there. I think they depend, they kind of know what the topics are and how much controversy there is, and they are pretty satisfied. So.
Any questions? It's pretty.
It's pretty strange, we're going, I think. We have any questions?
Laura?
Sure. Yep. Would you approve a sufficient number of police officers from our western block at Bulling Location, area election area, to preserve order and protect election officers and supervisors for many of your parents' prepared duties and to aid in enforcing laws relating to elections as required by Section Seventy-two, the rest general law, chapter fifty-five, which was changed in Section Thirteen and Chapter Ninety-two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two. Further, moved to designate a police chief to be authority to assign specific police officers according to scheduling and availability. Town clerk will advise the police chief on the location and timing of the search.
Second. Section, Ms. Cantillo, further discussion, anyone in the audience? Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, engineers. Thank you very much, I'll give that. Our next topic of discussion is a donation to beautification for the Citrus National Class of two thousand and one for a memorial tree. You guys want to come up? Sure. Caroline, Lily, Sarah, Black and Tosh, and Mike, maybe Social.
Okay. Two thousand.
Is that right? Two thousand and one?
Yes.
So we just had our reunion last Friday at Barker, and we raised a thousand dollars for Red Halls. We wanted to honor our five classmates who have passed away since we graduated. So we got in touch with the beautification committee, and they told us they were in the process of doing a spruce tree at Citrus Common. So we would like to gift our donation to go towards the planting of this spruce tree, and we broke up our check into two, and one for a memorial plaque.
Great. Before I ask questions, can you guys just tell me your names and say who you are, so you can talk to them? Just your name and address.
My name's Davis Suzo, and I live at twenty sixteen, Blackberry.
I'm Caroline Woody, in that fifty James.
Sarah McIntosh, sixteen, sitting below the road in Long Island. Sorry.
Substitution is chugging. Any questions?
Other question is the plaque is that something that you've already designed? You have it like, what's, you're giving us a check, or how's that process?
We were just told to earmark just for two separate purposes. So we haven't discussed with anybody, let's go, about that next step for a medical study.
Yeah, so it's going to be placed in public, that's somebody's going to have to take a look at it, approve, whatever, like, make sure, but just take that process.
Lorraine, would that be through you? The plaque.
I've already talked to Citrus Day about it, we're seeing a beautification commission, and she would love our noble chance.
Yeah, I think it would be, you know, pretty generic in the sense that, you know, Citrus National Class of two thousand and one in memory of classmates that have passed. You know, probably wouldn't list all of the names, because obviously, proportionally, as there's the liable condition of classmates, but I think just in memory of them, we got those people at the.
We just like the plaques up at Cole Parkway with the trees up there.
Oh, that's correct.
Exactly like that.
So we'll make sure to that, to show them this.
And the beautification committee, it's really has advised us the tree is the proper tree in the proper location, and will be the appropriate size when it's grown.
Yes, we have discussed that with both my creator and also with our town administrator, and also the tree may be more expensive than a donation, and the beautification commission has the funds to add to whatever cost maybe. And Kathy, who is one of the commissioners, is the plant tree specialist, and so it's going to be a tree that is not going to grow out of proportion, but that fits in with the laws and policy, and that is not going to be, we also talk, is an historical permission in the historical society to get there. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm just saying, thank you. I mean, it's just to do what you're doing, and to work with the beautification committee, and to make that donation, it's just wonderful, it's all staying involved. Even if you're in moral, it's okay, everything still, I just want to say thank you.
I agree, thank you so much, it's really nice gesture, and I'm sure the families of your classmates will be honored by your efforts, so we just want to thank you.
May I thank Lorraine also for her help in this project?
No.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Lorraine does an awesome job. She's actually ended up all this stuff, what, four, five years ago, and it's been a huge success, so always been more, it's awesome. And I just reiterate, thank you very much, very generous, and thanks for bringing back your people. How was the turnout, turnout for the reunion?
It was great, seventy-five people. Yeah, it was great, seventy-five.
Awesome. I have a motion.
Got the slipper except the donation, a one thousand dollars from the Class of two thousand and one to beautification commission to purchase and plant a lovely spruce tree with engraved plaque on the wall.
Second.
Second one, Ms. Cantillo, further discussion? Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, engineers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura, how was the meeting, Jim?
Sorry.
You have a meeting at all?
Thank you. Show me what you're. Okay. I'm sorry, thank you.
The next topic is a discussion vote for some DPW contracts. Kevin, cavity, DPW director?
Good evening. The first one is the standard gasoline diesel that we use up on the April list, to continue showing that contract with Dennis K. Burke.
Is the price for that?
Not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars, the price is based off an index.
Let's be sure right now.
They don't have the gallon. They don't have it by the gallon. It's rated on the NYMEX. Yeah.
Too depressing.
Right, there are state and cut the taxes that are incorporated into it, but they're not what we pay at the front.
Want to hold it separately? I have a motion, or any questions on the diesel?
Move to a word contract for the purchase of gasoline pursuant to state contract E and E forty-eight, and ultra-low sulfur diesel pursuant to state contract E and E forty-seven to Dennis K. Burke of two eighty-four Eastern Avenue, Charleston, Mass. for a period of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, we're told some not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars.
Second one, second. Mr. Piverch, further discussion? Saying none, all in favor? Engineers. And then second one, oil construction?
Thank you. So one of the oil meetings in the past, it was requested that we use more on the stairs on the way to road, and see if we can improve those stairs. So what we did is we took one of the contractors, GZA, we issued them a change order, they were doing some more concrete, laid the wall for some of the bit more, and making up some plans to make it pass to the existing staircases so that we could improve some of the treads, as well as allow deeper when the sand goes out, and move some of the rocks back some that it uses. We broke it up into four separate parts, one for grasshopper lane, one for poller, one for cliff, and one of the more of the section, more of the section stairs, and all of them did. We advertised throughout the state, we advertised in the Patriot Ledger, we also put it on Homebuys, and we did get one bid. It's for four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, make improvements to those stairs, all four sets. They're basically going deeper, and they added some treaded stairs, but they're not going to take out the entire set stairs that we go with set stairs, but they will make modifications, spread them the stairs, and make some improvements so that when the sand goes, they're.
And you said there was point one bid?
There was only one bid.
And it's been.
Same, just same way they are now, no one's going to include it. Sean and I went down, we took a look at it again today, and just went up there, eye to eye, and just saw that they're going to be able to pass this higher. It's not just point seven five, we just stairs, they're working tight, they're also going to have to move a lot of rocks out of there, as well as other miscellaneous stuff, as well as re-dress the rocks on either side of the stairs, just to get sort of a thing there. So that's the cost, the cost differential.
So you're telling us, Jim, if we want to proceed with the.
If you want to proceed with the product.
Questions, Laura?
I think we have a couple. Where's the funding coming from, two in one?
Funding is coming from our social protection.
Okay. And then number two, the stairs that are worn down, I'm not sure you saw today, will those be prepared to be more protected, you know?
Some will, but they're not going, in order for them to do it properly, in some of the upper sections, they'd have to chip all those up. We did not include that because the possibility will cost significantly. We're going for the bottom section and try to get the whole section to the bottom. But they are doing patching on the sides and some of the other areas, and we can evaluate them as, as we go, there are particular areas, but that is a bigger project to chip all those up and do all the tracks.
We can make more sense to get two of them better instead of a little bit across four. I don't know, if you close off two, just so you have two, not one in here, which is, you know, put our investment into two staircases, which are almost used instead of a little bit on four.
So we had, we did have the engineers go out and evaluate each set of steps. So a lot of them, they looked at, if they thought it was problematic, they did include it, but they didn't, you look all the treads coming up, you know, in some areas, because you think, when you hear we're replacing stairs, you think, you know, rip out all the treads and put all the treads in, it's tough to base, the ground, it's out of the bottom, it's been damaged to the source.
Still getting tear from the tile. Some of them are eight or nine steps up.
Right.
One of them, I can think of, actually, you got rid of the stairs in one of the repairs and bought a ramp. That would make, that ramp would be repaired as well.
You're doing that.
It'll get, it'll get an overlay, yep. And then we're adding stairs at the base, but there aren't any. Right now, they'd be covered, but let's not say, Kevin, the phone hasn't run this year, but the ramps have buried the sand. It's two feet of sand missing. It's a problem. So we're going to add some stairs where there aren't any, so when that condition happens, some stairs will appear on the beach that aren't there now.
To Laura's question, there is going to be some stair, for the very bad ones, they'll, they'll try and help those, but not all.
Some, but not all. I just don't want to mislead anybody, you never think that they're going to help any stairs there, correct? The majority of the work that we did was help them scale the stairs underneath, or make a concrete underneath it too, and kind of build it up. Sean said.
Questions? Derek?
Well, I'm with Laura, I would rather see that we concentrate on getting the stairs and getting access to the beach on the far, both far ends, and not worrying about the stairs that are on the street, late road, where there's no public parking on the east side, and where the entire neighborhood, there's no parking on any of those side streets. I feel as though people who live up there can walk to the right, or they can walk to the left to get access to the beach, and that's a lot of money for us to be. to get access to the beach, and that's a lot of money for us to be spending on, but we don't know what's going to happen to that beach. So, I, I was actually pretty surprised to see this amount of money that we bore us went out. To me, it was a little bit out of the blue. I mean, I think somebody might have said at some point that it would be great to, you know, have access or to fix the stairs, but I, I can't vote to repair four of such stairs.
Fair enough, we, we put it out.
Yep.
So, we're aware, it could have been a lot less, you know, I know that the budget's a problem.
Well, even so, I mean, the, the real issue down there is, and, and we have an issue with Sand Hills as well, with stairs that are very bad, and in fact, I think if you only did a minor repair to them, you'd be inviting people to do something that's really not safe. Um, I, I'm just saying, and, and none of this deals with the handicap issues. I, none of those staircases are handicapped accessible in any way. So, I, I just feel like that's four hundred thousand dollars is a lot. So, that's just my two cents.
So, here's Brian. I, I feel like we have to fix the stairs in Minor Beach, at Seapoint, at, uh, Sand Hills. And I, I guess, what's like the overarching, like, what's the game plan for the next three, four years? What we're kind of, I, I, like, the shotgun approach, we're doing this if we ask, which is great. But what, like, what are we saying for next year or the year after to kind of address those other, for Seapoint or for Sand Hills? Can you do two here or two there?
Well, this, this worked out because we had a GZA working, right there, so permitting and everything else included, you know, anything, every item was included, that, with that project. Um, the GZA stairs, we're going to be taking care of through the Yonico project. What goes through there, that goes up to that section? Um, what, in, uh, you know, see the point there, right at that section?
That's the Yonico.
That's the Yonico project, so that's going to be replaced with the Yonico project. Um, we look at that as it goes, like we do every year, we do minor project, we do this. Um, we don't have to look forward, we have, we have guys who walk in and will, if I can be correct, patch them up again. We'll do these.
The metal's sticking out, or like, some that's over, and just jumping over now.
If it is, and you make me aware of it, like, just, right now, we'll find out, put some concrete on top of it.
There's two, there's, yes, there's two, the, the far end one is already boarded.
So, I, I guess, like, I, I just don't know what the, what DPW's game plan is. Like, is this it, and then we're done, or are we, we're just doing that one, no more stairs? Or is this part of the larger? And I'm with you on the permitting, I mean, you're telling me, because permitting on this wall is going to be impossible. Uh, I'm inclined to go forward, because I don't want to be sitting here five years down the road. In some of this, we are using emergence, you know, that kind of emergency permitting, because as these stairs undermine, they, we don't have the concrete down below, we, we risk more potential losing by having more damage to it, that's, that's a misfortune. In the one in Sand Hills, we have been looking at, we actually came up with a planned block, but it's, it's pretty costly, it's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars to pay up, stone work, and a bunch of other stuff, so, um, you know, we're taking a lot of the time here as they come up. And this is a little more expensive than what we were expecting. Um, but, yeah. It didn't look, probably didn't, in time to be, I would get into explaining the prices. Just ended it, I'm sorry. And so, is, I know you put the bid out for all of those four, again, as we're talking about, is there a way to talk about maybe do two, if this is so expensive? Say, hey, we just did these two, and you start, is that not how the price is going?
So, well, this, this was bid is four, so if we wanted to do two, we'd have to go back out to bid and reduce the scope.
That's not yet.
Bid two.
Okay.
Third would be alternate one, fourth would be alternate two. You get multiple bidders, we might be down, but this was a four stair bid.
So, I'll correct you, we were actually pretty slick about it, we did out alternates. We did the base one, is grasshopper lane. Then we did out alternate one, which is Collier Road. And we did add alternate two, which is Clipper Estates, and then we did add alternate three, which is Nova Most Estates. So, we could do grasshopper, Collier, grasshopper, Collier, Cliff, are all four of them.
Generally has to go along with the alternates. So, it'd be the first one you have to do, then you do alternate one, then you want to keep going, you do alternate two. Can't usually jump around alternate, alternate, what are the first two alternates, Kevin told?
Grasshopper and Collier, they're about two fourteen, one twenty and ninety-six.
Yeah, we, we could do those instead of doing all four.
Fifty-sixty.
Six, grasshopper, and what?
Collier.
Collier was second?
Yep.
So, very good job in the, in the bidding process.
It looked, it looked expectant.
And we're not shooting the messenger here, we asked you to go and just look at the stuff, and we're just, as often surprised by the price of it. Uh, and we understand why you did it, because you happen to be working there, we, we do it quicker and a little bit cheaper, because some of these artists down there with permitting, so, you know, great work on that forward thinking that. You answered Andy's question, we don't really have a, a beach stairs plan, you know, it's probably part of the whole for shore protection.
As we go in the areas, we try to address.
So, I was happy because it, it was draw four. Uh, I was hoping that I was just wanting to, I agree with her. Uh, Karen, do you have?
Just a question on, uh, two things. One is, this contract that's awarded in any part tonight, what's the timing of construction for the contractors?
About a month, a month.
Uh, no.
No, okay. So, tomorrow, tomorrow, no, uh, no, it'll just take a while for them to mobilize, they'll have to do,
But it'll be this summer.
You know, it'll probably be a month, it'll probably be a month from now, because then we have to give us notice to proceed, get, get the rest of the, you know, get all the contracts settled, already met the pound out, so they're all set for the, um, just area to mobilize and throw out. And then it's going to do some minutes, yes, you have to do some minutes, also a lot of concrete designs and as well as, you know, and I'm sure re-buying, re-buying may could be, I believe, kind of happens. Yes, it's true.
Yes, they're ready. You know, I honestly, I think, yeah, to mobilize everybody with materials, it'll be important, it'll be something. Um, but that's obviously, I kept trucks out there, it's a day like that, I guess, yeah. Uh, the other question I had is, the, I'm not quite right, made in the, this is what I had here capital, we put in a hundred thousand for, is proving each access.
And that doesn't, not, that was not taken, that money was not used for this.
Okay. Uh, where, what's not going to be, uh, question?
Um, a lot of what we use that money for is pre-design, as well as with this. Um, we have some money saved up in there, so, you know, we could be done, um, without problem, we're not taking this away. I'm not pulling something, you know, I'm, I'm not going to something to see the point, so I can do these. That was a question.
Uh, and then the last question I had is, a while ago, I had a, engineering department was working on trying to address, which is a favorite ticket, the access to the gate at, at, on Hannah Road. How, obviously, the, this kind of investment is made, and that's going to be a problem priority for engineering.
It, it's still on our list, because we put it in as part of FEMA plan. But, like we said, it's extremely problematic, because if you make it handicap accessible, then it's going to flood, it's flooding out of the water. The other problem that I do is I need that for equipment access, so that I can get out of there with equipment when I have strong or strong work to do. And that was one of the biggest things, if we did a switchback there for a handicap ramp, then it might limit what I can get for piece of equipment down on the beach or either side, because that's the last surf side all the way down, it's just all nailed in the direction.
Oh, great, well, thank you.
So, that, that's tricky, that whole area is going to be tricky, and it's something we ought to look again, but.
Well, can you, can you just run down the locations and the price to reach one?
Sure. So, the base bid that we did was for grasshopper lane, that was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Add alternate one is Collier Road, that's ninety-six thousand dollars. The next road was Clipper Estates, that was a hundred and one thousand dollars. And the third section was just the northernmost section of stairs, which was a hundred and two thousand dollars.
Where's that one, Kevin?
That's next to boat ramp.
Next to what?
The boat ramp, uh, towards the boat, towards the boat ramp.
Okay.
That is actually, that was something I know, I couldn't explain to you.
Okay, okay.
I know, I can.
So, it doesn't look like there's huge economies of scale for each one. It looks like a lot of big brands.
Looks like the contractor put an extra twenty thousand dollars for mobilizations for grasshopper, and then that, that used to maybe twenty, five hundred thousand dollars.
So, it does make sense to have at least one safe entry point on that beach. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, I think, I think to not have any of this, especially if you put up kind of a hundred thousand dollar side to do somewhere, um, not a huge thing there. I don't know if that staircase is any more than the other's, right?
No, just so we know, we shut all, we've been shutting all four of these staircases down, we run chains across, before we did, seemed to cut the chains, but, um, you know, just because it is, it's dangerous, people's getting out of that, when the bottom rocks out.
So, what are your kind of thoughts on doing one or two of these, to get something safe there? Laura?
I mean, I agree, that's sort of my point in the beginning, was instead of turning a thin layer across four, but I also would love to see what plans. So, if we get ourselves into a situation in the leisure beach, maybe about a year ago or so, when we approved the project, and really could see what the scope that you're looking at would look like. So, I would love, if we were to approve this, I'd love to, certainly, also make a plan, so that we're versed in that type of event there. Um, because I'd love just to see and understand it better, so I know another way to, to say it just much. But, residents care very deeply about the way we assess our beaches as we, so, very much.
Right, we're set up with the base bid, with the third bid in the center. Kind of the roadway here, there are access ramps. We have a ramp at Hannah, and then you go all the way down to, I'm outside of the road. There's a ramp just after that one single house on that side. So, the thought process was, okay, these people can go to that ramp, these people can go to this ramp, let's do the middle, where all these residents can funnel, and that leaves staircase two over there and two over. So, that base bid is in the center of all of these homes, or I believe, was it Collier or Grasshopper? Grasshopper, Grasshopper was the center, is Hannah.
Which is the worst, which is the worst disrepair?
They all have a different variant levels, and the plans show that. And, um, brands need to be reviewed in certain places. This one actually has a ramp for, um, a drop off kind of rock. Um, one of them actually has a rock wedged in the parapet, with a small return wall over bottom, landing before you step on the beach, there's a rock down that, uh, I wish we would have tried to do that. Hold on. That's how the four break up, I'm not sure in what order they go after the base bid. So, we have Hannah, we've got Grasshopper, and it goes back, goes Hannah. It's called, it's a, Grasshopper.
That's Clipper Estates, one round the far side.
Yeah, that is Grasshopper. You're right, that's Cliff.
I wonder if there will be a Grasshopper.
So, for example, on, on this one, on Grasshopper, we would be, we'd be adding six steps down below, as well as this large piece of concrete to stabilize the stairs, before that all be done. And right now, that's below water. Then we would also, up here, here in the stairs, as you come down, and they come down like this, we'd be pouring this section, we'd be redoing these stairs, as well as the bottom section. So, I guess what I was saying is, we're not going to be doing these stairs up top here, we're not addressing those. Those could be addressed in the future, or if we see something, if we see a dump that's not safe, we could, you know, we should have changed order to contract or get it locked up. So, we see this.
Somebody that goes up, down the street most of the time today, I can tell you that most of the stairs, well, I'd say all of the stairs at the top are possible. And, you know, are perfect though, but they're not really, like, it's sort of the last third of all of the stairs are in that shape, like, the, the, the bars sticking out, where there's no tread at all, or, and they're, and where they're pumped over, and to different degrees, some are worse than that.
And that's what we went after, we, we, you know, we didn't want to create a two million dollar scale up here.
And as they point out, on several, or two of those staircases, rocks are a good problem. It's over the course of years, the case, if, if you give the stairs a max, you get your bottom, and it's, it's huge rocks, it's a lot of it. Which may be an extraordinary.
Right, and that's probably why the cost of the contract is more significant, because you have two different subcontractors, where you've got, you're going to need a lot of excavator, and then you have to remove the rocks, you need it out, as well as put some, put up excavation, and the concrete die also, so.
Not a good conversation, but I'm going to suggest, regardless of, you know, we, 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 because maybe residents that didn't know, we're talking about this, but, but to make a, an issue, we're going to have to become an ask question to you. Question? Yeah?
Yes, with the beach, and, talk to you about this, but while we're, we're, commission charged, and I think it's a pretty, pretty, pretty difficult. They should be consulting with the very least, and I think this needs to be put on, uh, uh, priorities to that situation. Uh, again, I'm going to go back to back, there is no public parking on Blade Road at all. There is no parking on any of those side streets on the streets. That's a great benefit to the neighborhood, but my question is, are, are we repairing the stairs just because, you know, we have the permits and it seemed like it was a good idea? I, I don't feel as though it's enough of a public benefit to the whole town to do those staircases. I think people would much rather see improvements made where the parking lot is at the line. And in whatever way you can do that, that gate, when, when you get there and it's closed, not open, it's big size and everything, it's very unattractive, there's not a lot of parking down there, but, so I would prefer that we really look hard at how we can provide better access at the line and, and deal with whatever issues we have on the, the, um, the gate there. So, and I really think that the beach commission needs to run this.
I would just advise, I, I absolutely understand your point, that, because the beach disappears a tie tie. Um, you know, all those folks that parked in the public parking are chased up just now. So, it, it does, and then they walk down, because, you know, honestly, it's, everybody wasted the last minute, it is all just.
Well.
So, and then we, and the minor parking lot is slated for fall, right? That was already approved, haven't we?
It's not approved yet, no, we're still working on designs, and the people I have working on the design are all a long way up right now, so.
Oh, yes.
I don't have that, I don't have the, 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 for sure, I'm.
That is, if it works.
It kind of appealed for a little while, we, we terminated it, but we just haven't been able to execute it yet.
Okay, so, I'm going to suggest, and then someone has the last point to make, we've got a lot of good points here. Safety, I mean, it's our, this is, is a very highly used area, especially with storm, um, people like to wander. So, um, can I suggest that we post poll and put it on the next agenda? Give neighbors the opportunity to come in and ask questions, and then, uh, vote then. And if anyone has any questions, specific ones, just hang out in the cabin, we'll, we'll. Can we get a picture of, uh, of the plan, David?
So, what we'll do is we'll take the plans, they'll be in our office, we'll put them on the front, and ask anybody who wants to come in, if you can, take a look at them, and feel free to either we talk to me, Sean, or Jeff, who's in the office.
Thanks, Kevin.
No problem.
Thanks, Joe, Kevin.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. We are now on a discussion vote of a few joint entertainment permits. There's one at seventy-nine Kenneth Road. Is it Stephanie here?
Yeah.
Stephanie? You can just have a seat, give it a name and address, which I think I already said.
Yeah, um, so actually, my love on two first out, but for having the events, I mean, I can't, Stephanie, um, they were happy to have our wedding. Lucky to close at eleven, um, we love Situate and we want to get married in Situate, so we're getting married in the beach and having our reception there. Um, DJ will go no later than ten forty-five, that's like Monday. Anyways, so, like, six to eleven, just.
Is that a quiet residence?
Yes.
Any questions, Stephanie? Great, so wedding ends around eleven, you've notified all the neighbors?
I did.
And any, did we send out letters to them, requests to them?
Yeah, I dropped off the letters up there, I, I mean, I go to Saint Paul's each channel and.
All right, are we missing anything?
We have a grand indoor entertainment permit to Stephanie Carroll for DJ at private event at seventy-nine Kennett Road on Saturday, October twenty, twenty-two. We live thirty P M until like eleven P M, second.
Second one is Camp Hill for the discussion. Say none. All favor?
Hi.
Hi, it is Mary.
Hi, Greg.
Have a great wedding.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Greg.
Uh, we have another outdoor entertainment permit, this is at twenty-nine Kennett Avenue. Anyone here for that one? Do you want to wait, no, just?
Um, surprised, not all of it, more?
All right, we'll check back.
He came last Tuesday, I think the meeting was last Tuesday. Oh, I said, no, it's this next week. But we have everything.
Right, we'll, we'll come back to it a little bit. If you see, if you see the person walking, just communicate. Uh, and the next one is whole parkway music stage for everything. Come on up. Any good addresses, someone to get us started?
Susan, we are in President of the Situate Chamber of Commerce.
Susan?
Assistant President.
So, what are you doing?
Just playing, and having a day.
Good, good, good.
We don't like the time right now, because. Um, I think we have the, um.
What was?
The list that, that we have, uh, in ten minutes. We did fill a spot that we had empty that's been filled today. Again, we would say things here are kind of focusing on a lot of local, you know, self-shore bands. And, um, we actually have a little, so, we didn't have any before, asking for her to change, so that'll be fine.
What is it?
I looked up.
Oh, sorry. He will certainly, he will certainly, have a good time.
I can tell.
Yeah.
A good time, but then you cannot jump up and down.
Just kidding, no rules. Um, so you said ten, we have eight in front of us, is it eight?
Yeah, those two spots have been filled, um, I can send the rain and update tomorrow.
What time would it be this time?
Uh, the ten o'clock on Saturday's been filled, it's a local young, young man, I guess with four assets, um, four assets, um, situated, and I think much of that is done, I think, I don't know where that. I guess, I'm coming with a band and we're working on, um, four o'clock on Saturday, so, down. Built as well. So, just.
So, that's not, right, there's only, it's not only one, two, three, four, five, and four on Sunday, is there another one on Sunday, it's not?
Do you want to see the eight bands and that, Susan?
That's nine, I see nine there, they wrote down ten.
Yeah, I'm just more concerned about, is the last one on Sunday at five o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And the last one on Saturday.
Yes. Yes.
Good, well, great job as well. Um, any questions?
Move to grand outdoor entertainment permit to chief.
Actually, the Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, to the Chamber of Commerce for a music stage in early days of August, fifteen of seven, twenty twenty-two. For a number of bands performing live music from ten thirty A M to eight P M. Second.
Second one is Camp Hill. Any questions in the audience? Any more questions through the board? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, it's Mary.
Thank you.
Have a great time.
I'm sorry, can you maybe just stop it on that?
No, it's, it's camp.
Okay, thank you.
See you there.
Awesome.
Okay. The next, um. Uh, the next, uh, special, special event for Kid Live Adult Fundraiser, Michael Chase.
Hi.
And Michael, how are you?
I'm good, how are you, Kevin? Thank you for your time. So, uh, Michael Chase, I am a Norwell resident, I'm sorry. But, live very near the Situate border and love Situate. Um, of course, um, and I'm very pleased to be in the light. Um, so I, for the last fifteen years, I've been organizing a stand-up owl, uh, charity fundraiser. That for ten years went from Plymouth across Cape Cod Bay, thirty-four miles to Welford. Um, and we did it for ten years and we raised money for a, a charity in Boston called Christopher Haven. Christopher Haven is a, kind of like a Ronald McDonald House for kids who come to Boston for specific pediatric cancer, uh, particularly, uh, brain cancer. There's a, a treatment in Mass General, a lot of proton therapy was just particularly effective on, on brain, on pediatric brain cancer and it takes six to eight weeks. And they need a place to stay, so Christopher Haven has nine apartments now next to Mass General. Where they allow family to go on and, you know, families, moms, dads, kids can come and stay while the child is on through history. So, after ten years, um, people were getting older and there were bigger fish in the sea and, uh. It just took a long time, fourteen hours to get to Rock Bay. Um, and, and so, uh, so we decided to go, uh, a coastal paddle, a few years from disgusted beach up to Duxbury Beach. Um, and then, uh, this year we, uh, are looking at doing from Duxbury Beach. Close to shore, up into the South River and then all the way up the South River, all the way to the Kebbell Foot, uh, Foot Bridge, which is up near the C V S and, and Levitate. Uh, and then we will take out there and walk across the street and have an after-party at Rex's and, and left eight, uh, Surf Off. Um, the guy, Dan Hass, who owns the Surf Off is a, is a board member of our charity, he's offered us, is, uh, uh, is venue for that. So, um, I've been working, uh, or just in contact with Jake Emerson, harbor master at Duxbury, Mike Dino, harbor master at, uh, Marshfield. And Steve Mooney, harbor master here in Situate, um, since May to kind of discuss the planning of it and, um, and, and safety. And, you know, I used to, when we were going across the bay, we would, we would work with Coast Guard, so we had to work pretty diligently to make sure that safety was, was, was of the utmost importance and business. Um, and in kind of recently, uh, harbor master, Mooney, uh, kind of, I think, came to conclusion that because it might take up some of his resources. That would be a good idea to let the town of Situate know about this and to just make sure it was okay. Uh, we, we don't actually step foot on the town of Situate land, but we do certainly paddle all the way up, you know, near, near, near shore. We're typically not more than a couple hundred yards offshore. Um, it, it's, it's become a much more manageable, um, event than going across the bay. So, um, I guess I'm, I'm in front of you here to, uh, ask for, uh, permission to have support from, uh, the Situate Harbor Master, who I believe is, is, um. Is hundred percent fond or is supporting the, the paddling either in a partial manner or I don't know exactly how, but, um. We, we have, you know, we got four or five, um, private boats that surround the paddle or they shepherd us up, they, they make sure the boats stay away. Um, they have, we have medical, we have medical people on board. So, we're pretty self-sufficient from a safety perspective, but obviously if there's an emergency, for whatever reason, we would need, uh, to contact the harbor master and have decisions from that perspective. So, um, that was a quick summary of what, what we do and, uh, and why I'm here, but, uh, any questions on, on the event?
Thank you. Um, any questions for Michael? So, how close do you get to Situate, you're, you're going to go down, are you going by the spit?
Yeah, so we start, we start at Duxbury Beach and we go north nine miles to the, to the spit. We come close to the spit, kind of near the, uh, what is it, the military, um, area and then, and then we don't go through the, through an island, through an island cut as the water just cruises through there, right? And fortunately, the tide's going in, and so when we get into the river, we kind of ride the tide and it's a nice end to the paddle, but we, we, uh, we ported over, uh, the beach. At the, at basically at True Island Cut, so we're not having to go through there, which is, which is what you have to do, because it's, it's pretty dangerous. Um, uh, you know, I've done it a hundred times, it's, I'm on the water all the time, uh, but with, you know, thirty to forty people, um, you know, we want to make sure that everybody's safe and, and, and that's. So, that's the only time that we are on shore.
Questions?
Excellent. I would see that Steven sign is off, you know, um, did he, I was looking through the backup.
There's a new one in front of you here.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Um, that's special events because of the town administration's office, Michelle is going to touch police, uh, power master. Um. Everybody's approved it?
There is, thank you.
Yeah.
Did see it, like, that's, that's my question, so that's good, I just want to make sure there was an organized network to, uh, protect you and not that we were just approving a permit without a point. Thanks, great. And, uh, thank you, pre, pre-charity initiative, letting me stay by shore, not out buying those whales.
Yeah, yeah.
We'd all get flipped over.
I think that's core there, yeah. I think it's fabulous and I think it's wonderful, I'm going to invite you, hopefully someday in the future, so you can actually step on board those folks on to Situate's shores, what, what happened. There's probably no possible way, there's any way to have a virtual paddles there. So, we do. We actually, we actually, so in twenty twenty, we, we weren't able to have paddles, so we basically did that, and everybody paddled a force of their own. Um, and set safety regulations and everything like that. Um, and we actually carried that on, uh, for the last few years where we have maybe a dozen people who will do it across the country. And most of them have been involved in this and just moved elsewhere. Um, so, you know, we have people in Florida, we have people in Maine, we have people in California who are, who will paddle during the week of the sixth through the thirteenth, uh, for the, for the benefit of Christopher Haven, so. Um, yeah, so we do a virtual paddle. Do you want to join? Yeah. I don't know, I, I fall over.
Any other questions?
So, it's not entirely virtual.
Right, yeah, no, no.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, great, great charity as well, yes, please.
Uh, move to approve a special development to Keith Flatt Bay Challenge in first stand-up paddle or fundraiser expected at Christopher Haven, um, is thirteen from six thirty A M to one P M.
Second one is Camp Hill. Any questions in the audience? Any from the board, all in favor? I think she ends.
Right, thank you all, appreciate it, thank you.
Next, uh, item on the agenda today is, uh, some interviews of people that are one of the, on different boards and committees. And the first one we have is Councilman Agent Susan Poehl.
Hi.
Susan, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good.
Thank you for letting me speak. Um, I'm a ten-year veteran.
Say it again?
Ten-year veteran, right.
Awesome. Ten-year veteran, it was one second to get. So, we're going to be in our stuff.
Do you want to give looks? I don't think you guys are dressed in that for it.
Yeah. Yeah, for me, I'm very important.
It's a good time.
Booty Vortex?
Booty Vortex, yeah, what is it?
Yeah.
Oh, it's Booty Vortex, I was thinking. It's awesome.
They play a better player.
It's the same thing, just eighties cover band.
Fourteen. I guess, Susan, thank you for your patience. Now, we're happy to hear all about you and why you would like to join this unit.
Can I, really? Um, but thank you for having me. Um, I'm the new retired adult services leader in the Situate Town Line. I was there for twenty years and I feel that my, um, professional background and working always in public libraries in Situate and also in classes. Gives me, um, which are my interests and I have a commitment to Situate to give. Um, briefly, um, before twenty years in Situate, and I'm not going to give you too many years, but then you're going to start wondering. You're going to start contemplating the years. I visited the class library for twenty years. During that time, um, I was on the Situate Town Library trustee's book with fifteen years. And during that time in class, I also got the new library degree. So, when the opportunity to go to Situate came up, I did, and that was twenty years ago. And now, it's, time has passed and I'm a senior. So, I decided to go check out the, this senior stuff. And I was so impressed to take courses, um, I think it's a real gem of Situate, um, it's really outstanding, and the interests, not, you name it or you suggest something, they're open. It's just a nice, nice attitude and it's a fun attitude and, um, and plus a serious attitude too. And, um, I just like to give back and I enjoyed my times in the library and I'd like to be more involved and I think I have something to contribute towards the goal. And I appreciate you considering.
Any questions, Susan?
Uh, I'd like to first congratulate you on your retirement for serving the Situate water for so long. Um, thank you.
You're not going to mention that.
So, I'm sorry?
In the other twenty years, who asked?
Well, I'm sure they're grateful for it. Um, no, but thank you, but, um, with joining the, the Councilman Agent, is there anything that you, uh, observed that you would like to enhance?
Well, you know what I did, I, um, I thought when I saw in the newsletter the opening, I contacted Linda, the director, and she said, why don't you come and observe what the meeting was like? And I did, and I thought it just reminded me so much of things I did as a trustee, what I did with work, you know, um, I get calls and different things and what they're pushing to us. And I felt that I could contribute, like, it's interesting, they've had one terrific show, um, Julie Child, that was exactly what I was going to show before I worked, um, in Situate. And it was a real hit, see, they wanted to, they want to really open it up because people, you know, surprising, even with the kind of people are retiring, some before you, you know, old. Know what I mean, and they, they have different interests and they're willing and they love the support. As I said, she said, I think, um, she was very supportive to me, she said, I told her what I did and I told her what I did, what, when I had a show. And I was just out of heart. I said, I've been involved in all sorts of things like that, and she said, I think that would be good with that whole, this is my own friend. And I hope I wasn't too wrong.
Any other questions, Susan?
No, I'm, I'm assuming you're bringing in programming experience in the library over at the senior center, so I think that's great.
I, I, and I would love to go there, and everyone did, um, I mean, everyone was terrific, I don't think anyone shot me the other, the other, I could get a dime out of something. And it was just, this is way too rough a thing. And I want to introduce that too, because it helps with the, you know, the money can be spent on other areas that they. You're welcome, thank you.
Great, thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
So, we're folk either late tonight or next meeting, you don't have to hang around, I'll arrange a backpack, I agree.
And, um, you, you name it. All right.
We'll email you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, there's one opening on that committee right now, and I think that's a voting number, right?
Yes.
Next. Sister City of France, Sion Bree, Patrick Canning.
Very pleased.
You're supposed to say "Bonjour".
Patrick Canning, two twenty-seven, Yanar.
Thank you for coming in, Patrick. Tell us, why do you like getting involved in this committee?
Sure. So I'm relatively comfortable with situat. My wife and I moved here about three years ago. Since then, I'm looking for the right opportunities to participate in and contribute to the community. I feel that this position would fit for background, experience, and interests. Specifically, I'm active in engineers' borders, have been involved in international projects through that organization. I've studied abroad in French speaking areas, speaking intermediate level of French. Kind of aside from those more technical items, I'm a really strong believer in the value of benefits. So you know, immersion in other cultures in a way that goes beyond just tourism. And that's something I saw on what's published for the Sister City Committee. That's looking at business, trade links, arts, culture, tourism, all the above. I've been fortunate to experience some of that through a close family I have abroad. That's the type of experience I'd like to publicly send to others, you know, in situat. You know, as well as looking into those more institutional links for, you know, for business and others. So I appreciate your consideration, your position for this. So I had a happy day. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Just did you participate in any of the programming that's been here with Sister City already or?
I have.
It's a great, great, very active. So thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Some here for you. Is that true?
My brand practice is that I mean, very impressive, thank you. Hopefully I'm warmer.
Okay. And just to reiterate what Karen said, great committee, full of energy. We just had, what was that then? Early in the spring, two or three months ago, doubling twenty people came over. And great collaboration, great friendships. And like you said, it's more than just a trip. And we've been to Ireland as well and try and collaborate, figure out how we learn from each other and really see if there's that kind of development opportunities we've lost. And we're looking to start a new one also.
I saw that as well.
Yeah, I'll just say that the committee recently, as Tony mentioned, we had students over. And it was a little difficult improving families. So, you know, to be a student, you're a younger person. You know, it'd be helpful if, you know, you can help them to start that, working in other number. Because that's what it really takes to sponsor students. I thought about it, it's like, high school kids? Oh my God.
I wouldn't.
I just could over the top of it.
Be happy to.
Yeah. Okay.
That's great. All right. If there's no more questions, thanks for coming in. There's one opening on that committee. And like I just said, it's like, Susan, we'll talk about it later, even though this evening or sort of after next week.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ellen.
Next. Traffic rules and regulations. We have three people trying out this out that committee. First one is Dan Overdys. Dan, how are you?
How are you?
Why didn't give us your address?
Yeah.
Tell us why you want to do this.
Jan's moved eight, one seventy, Oshel. So I moved to six thirty November, grew up west of Massachusetts. Came to South Shore, grew up, and I'm actually a nice, nice guy as well. Connected roots. Interested, have not participated in it yet. I'm enjoying, I'm studying on my own, but living on Boothville Road. Just talked to a lot of neighbors and heard a lot of inputs in terms of speed activity. And I just got very interested in, we have three more goals. Fire right on the whole twelve. Two and a half roads, like you travel along as well. The highway as well, the ground as well. And just like being upfront, just maybe consider just like the value, the importance of traffic. Rules and regulations that come with it and also just driving around the neighborhoods. Just actually consider how I might be considered, you know, driving the traffic when I should. Realize the importance to consider the impact, value that these families. And looking at the committee, I know the exact design of it, and I'm looking at the names and ownership. As my understanding is, it's a citizen representative. Sort of a tendency to give a voice, a mechanism, someone I can talk to, communities. I think I have a value that I have as a, not an expert in speculation or whatever. But an important part of it is a positive way of influencing, being involved in our community, the community. It's very important to me and Charlotte and Karen.
Great. And before I go into the board, you're exactly correct. There are, we do have the experts on the committee to answer the technical questions. Please, you, the chair, who obviously was in here, and, you know, so there are those who are looking for that sixth role. Any questions?
Yeah, it is a very impactful group, you know, politician. Two questions that I have for you is, look, first off, as a happy thing, we may actually have a lot better. Two questions are, normally this group reads it, like, I believe it's a hot or hot thirty. Is that doable? And it tends to be personally, because it's usually making this to look bad.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you might want to talk about that, just having to manage.
Okay. Well, yeah, I didn't know if you had a computer or whatever.
No, no.
You might be surprised. You go, oh, okay. And then the other part is, you all have a learning perk if you're going to have a short while. And someone says, really, if you can hear this, really turn on the speed on platform or the listening section. You get to have to get your car and go over and see it yourself, because probably you don't have experience with that. Are you comfortable with giving that?
Yeah, partly, to be honest, yeah. That was partly the interest.
Yes.
Is learning more about situat knowledge, like what I would get, so I just, um, I can get all the, move to do that. Yeah, okay.
Any other questions for Dan?
Just to let the board know, he, Mr. Overdys is also interested in the Commission on Disabilities and the Culture of Conference. He put it there. I did throw it out.
Is there, and this is your number one choice though?
This is, yeah, this is my random one choice.
Okay, random. So just for.
Just to let you know, there's only one slot on traffic.
Yeah, so there's one spot for three applicants, which is, whatever.
It's a rock wall city.
And so.
You're welcome. It's your care.
So if it does happen that you're much liked for this one, would you like us to want you to want to the others?
Sure.
Yeah.
Not to say that you won't get one of those, but just.
The bills have.
All right, Dan, thanks for coming in.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Bill?
Well, it's nice to see all these from here, mostly from here.
How are you, Bill?
Good, thanks. Bill Schmidt, thirty-three, H. P. Road.
Tell us why you'd like to get involved with traffic rules and regulations.
I tend to go off script here, but situat's the same road invited to the town to continue success. So with the expansion of situat in such a pretty dramatic ways in the past couple of years. The town itself is not built for this type of expansion. So we need to adapt, change to the things that are happening in situ. I mean, you just look down at the road green, what's happening, off the dirt way, and then, you know, Toll Brothers, and then what's going on with three A bus station, bus station. I think that the expansion of residents and businesses, they need to adapt to changing conditions that are natural con- consequences to town's growth. The population today is being added in areas that weren't originally designed to accommodate this type of growth. So I think that it's the duty of residents to get engaged. If they think that there's something that needs attention, needs change, they think that it's the duty of citizens through their elected representatives to make the changes and be supportive in those changes. I've demonstrated that through, out of the force of my living here in situ. As you well know, I was on the Concom for many, many years and Waterways for many, many years. And then when I started to deploy, couldn't guarantee that I'd be here for every meeting. So now my job is now strictly here in the region. So I have every confidence in the world that I can answer the bell when the time comes. So I think that I've kind of set the precedent of my relationships with, you know, the town, the people that represent the town. And I want to now pick that ball up again and introduce it in this way. He, I think that traffic rules is going to be one of the pivotal points in the town's growth. It's going to need to have the right people making the right decisions. And part of the, part of the way, you know, that I see my job and pretty much the job that I do now is interpreting laws and regulations and policies to implement, you know, whatever traffic management regulations that we have to. Obviously in mine with Mass DOT. And then interpreting and communicating that information back to the concerned citizens. People that are saying, hey, I'm going too fast down my street, I need a stop sign. So that's pretty much it. I mean, when I was writing down in my office, there were two eighteen-wheelers that went down my street. And I'm like, five years ago, that, it would have been such an unbelievably rare occurrence. And then there were two right behind, because with this infrastructure growth comes all the other poor load things, you know, the delivery trucks, building trucks, dump trucks, et cetera, and so on. So all of this needs to be accommodated for, as we continue to grow, we're going to continue to grow. We've done, we've made all the right moves, you know, and situat is a popular place to be. And it's gonna, we are, as I can tell by Concom, we are pushing the boundaries of where we can build and where we can sustain growth. And it's going to continue. So we need to make allowances for it. And I'm hoping I can help do that.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for both?
No, I mean, I've known Bill for years and I, I mean, you're dead on with some of your observations with all the traffic centers that are going on. So I like your comment of, you know, as a member of the traffic rules, that you would also be that public to the public, because I think that is not happening enough as committee tends to. Just because it's, I'm surprised we only have one citizen on this committee, actually. It'd be nice if we could expand that, I'm sure that would be in the charter. Bylaw review. Bylaw review. You know, I'm surprised only one, because I think you're raising really great point. Now everybody knows the traffic, they know the situation, maybe it's a hand. So there isn't that natural obligation that citizens, I think.
And that's a role I feel very comfortable.
I'm encouraged by the fact that you've been on other committees, so you know the committees have a certain way of working. And I will say, one of the problems with traffic rules and regs is you can come up with a solution for one neighborhood and all you're really doing is pushing it to another neighborhood.
Down the, down the street.
I mean, I think that's a big problem in the West End, is that you can say, well, we want forty ton limits here. That means those trucks are going somewhere else and you have to work with the other towns.
What's the alternative?
Stay up. Yeah.
No, no.
And I guess I would like to see traffic rules probably more involved in planning process, at least in terms of going to their meetings, when they're having the discussions about, so where is all this traffic? And where are the streets going to go? How, how, I think that's a point at which maybe we're needing to track the rules more forward.
And that's what I think, you're right on the money. It's one of the things that I had down there. I don't know if I read it correctly, the need to plan and adapt, you know. So I think that that planning piece is going to be vital in whatever role I can play supporting that, you know. I'm looking for what you're doing, so I get the spot. And there's a lot of other things too that we can look at. You know, what can we accomplish through private, state, and federal partnerships? All of that is another avenue to us.
Great. All right, Bill, thanks for coming.
All right, nice to see you. Thanks a lot for the time. Take care.
Yeah. And the last applicant for this committee is Bill Brokham.
Right.
Bill, how are you?
Good.
I had a bite. Nice to come in. Give us your address and tell us why you want to do it.
We're Phil Brokham, is well represented tonight at the Brokham, I live at ninety-nine, we're Phil Brokham.
Great. So what brings you in here to be involved in this committee?
I've lived on Boothville for thirty-five years. I've lived in situ for thirty-five years. I've seen a ton of change. This is previous challenges. The amount of traffic, the amount of people, we're not building any new roads, so we need to accommodate this new traffic. I've been a runner, a white parent until recently. I became a walkman and walking character on the roads in situ since I moved here. It's a scary, it's a scary proposition. It really is. I mean, you always have to be on the defense. So I won't, I'm not trying to hide it. That's what I'm about. I'm about pedestrian bicycling. This business of, I'll shout, not upset the motorists, I think is over. There's traffic calming measures across the country that people, that towns are adopting to try and slow the traffic down. Make it more safe for walkers and pedestrians. Just walking from the train station to my house is scary. It really is. There's a side, there's no sidewalk, there's a wide curve. Then you got to cross three A, and there's half a side walk. It's just, it's just kind of scary. I'm a practical minded person. I understand this stuff. That's telling me to have to drive ten miles an hour. I understand that. But there are, there are things that need to be studied and addressed. About, I recently retired. I retired in October. So I do have time for something like this. It turns out, you know. I attended a couple of the meetings. I'm not an engineer. But I have, I'm the guy who started that petition to eliminate truck traffic through the West End. So I understand how these things work within the town. You have to develop consensus. It just be one, I've seen that, not one. So I'm pretty good with working with people. I understand kind of how folks are, um, signed with a little bit of thing. Other than that, I think I've proven I have a passion of organizing the ocean.
Any questions?
Happy you're building the marching. Was it the citizens petition that you did?
It's not. I mean, I've been through Orwell. I've grasped signatures. There's only thirty homes, and that's School Street, Grove Street. I'll be back there. So there aren't many Norwells that are interested. But I'm going down Summer Street through situat and for that. And that's a long term thing. I should say, you know, that's a pet project of mine, but that is not the only reason I'd like to sit on this committee. There are, you know, I understand it's a town's line for me. It turns out I'm very interested. I've been in touch with the park transportation. I've got a good contact in there who's been filling in a lot of things that go on through different towns. I spent thirty-five years, thirty, driving average thirty-five thousand miles a year southeast of Mass. Just kind of snared it through the financial mess. So I'm kind of aware of how things go in the ten minutes.
Yeah, I'd say Bill's been, you know, really collaborative and understanding of steps that that takes, you know, to correct measures that he has championed up there on the West End, which are fair. And we're just waiting to get a meeting with Orwell, like for us, and I'm hoping to see. And we're just waiting to get a meeting with Worthover, like for us to be working, because we can't do anything on the West End without education for those two towns as well, so.
I have, to your previous, to your previous comments from the last fellows again. You know, I've, I've seen truck ban proposals that have been submitted to the Department of Transportation. I understand they have to offer alternative routes. I also understand that if the, if it's the number of routes, such as two twenty-eight or one twenty-three, the towns can't block it. So anyone can't say, oh, they can't look trucks. On two twenty-eight, they, they just don't have anything to say about that. And I've driven the routes, I've measured the routes, I've timed the routes. So I understand how this is considered to work.
Well, thanks for coming in. And if you say any of the other ones, we'll, we'll discuss this tonight or next meeting and make it soon.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Last question. Mr. Chair, do you have any second choices? Because you're both, all three were great candidates, and there's only one position open. So I don't know if it's traffic rules or regulations or bust.
Yeah, that's really.
That's all you.
We already had it.
We did, okay.
Thank you. Great, thank you. All right, our last interview for the evening is, oh, Kevin? Let's see it here. What's that? Oh, it is. Okay, we'll do it one, we have. And I'm assuming that um, uh, the passes aren't yet, or?
No, they forgot. Might have some of the column.
Okay.
Uh, so they're gonna have to be rescheduled, I guess.
We can look and see if we can load it. What, what's the date of it?
It's um.
September, September.
September ten.
Okay, we have September. Great. So let's move on to discussion of both from the Situas each commission. Kelly Bauer. You're already here as well. Guys? So tonight we're gonna talk, and I think you have a few other things you wanna talk about. So um where do you wanna start?
I'm in charge.
Okay. Do you wanna start the discussion?
Well, um, I think you're all familiar with it. We've been doing this seriously and discussed it. Essentially, we decided to try to focus on key areas, focus off community. Uh, when I update this area, stream like.
I'm sorry, Kelly, I'm sorry. Can you speak into the micro console of the committee here?
Hello. Thank you. So we, um, wanted to shift the focus to key areas, where we saw possibilities to improve. We, um, moved outdated material. We stream like the language. We, I'd be, this is an advice chair. We involved the postal management officer and a non-resident. And we changed the term to our first three years.
Great. And we have read this and we talked about before. Any, anybody have any feedback or comments on? Go ahead.
Um, this may be semantic, but I think that the, um, the underdues, number one, I think your commission is in an advisory role, because this reads to preserve, restore, maintain, and manage town of Situas public beaches. Well, that's actually a management thing. So I would just suggest that it, it say to advise the town and the select board on the preservation, restoration, maintenance, and of the town of Situas public beaches and beach properties. I, I, with everything else, I just felt so, using the word manage is not really your role. It's not even our role to manage. Advise, consent, nothing to it.
Good point. It says it in the first paragraph, but I think you're, September. Yeah, so probably all of those. The third one as well.
Yeah.
So maybe we just change the wording a little bit to, you're really an advisory committee to us.
Right.
So, in terms of the government. Have you ever?
No, it's, it's very well done. It's very comprehensive. It's a lot of work. I don't know if you've heard though, um, there was a talk tonight about to smooth off the stairs at my beach.
How was it?
Um, and I think that your commission should clearly be consulted on that.
Did you leave?
No, I thought you did. You took our comments well, and everyone is exactly the vision, which was to be a southern, your own, and so what that commission has has been shared into. Uh, so thank you for doing this, Mark. Thank you for much. The expectations are, are, are well, well, we're fine. So for the job, because this is one people study.
Hey.
Last one, people.
Just wanna say, I mean, having the reason for everyone to do this too, having clarity of vision and clarity of it's about allowing the clarity of actual movement for these sorts of projects. It's not just moving papers or paragraphs. The real reason that that clarity is gonna go, really help folks in what they're saying, because what you're doing is really focusing and allowing this vice to be, uh, opinions to commit itself. I just wanna say thank you, because it's, it is important. I haven't had that talk on, just want to hold up.
Do you wanna do these all together or?
Um, well, we.
Oh, sorry.
Um, one other thing, I, you know, I, as I read this a little bit more thoroughly than after Karen's comments, there's just a few other places in there where you just may wanna tighten up the fact that it's, like, you're not gonna spend the funds of the beach that you're gonna recommend at us that we allocate those. So it's probably all just semantic stuff.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
May I ask, Mrs. Graham, at the end of the, the bench here, is there a way which to change the headache, you know, duties to one other word that may help them so they don't have to readjust every paragraph? Is there a pattern there that may be more appropriate?
I think you're, you're exactly right. I think because the mission is very clear that you're advising, advising this level on these issues on a town officials, that um yeah, that you could probably say to you found that, maybe, but that for a second. But yeah, instead of duties, you could say something like advise the board on the following issues or something. Just so it's like that, so. I don't think, yeah, I don't think it should be that.
Yeah.
Right. I know what you're saying though, if there's some automatic program that adjusts all those words.
Exactly.
To fulfill mission, commission will advise the board on the following following duties that that front line of the rest can say. Do you think that makes it appropriate?
I don't think so. I, I, I mean, I don't think it's gonna take much to go in and change a couple of roads on, you know, three, four, five at the, at the top of the.
I'm happy to make all changes.
But I think that all the content is there, it's just, we just have to keep the separation of.
I'm pretty comfortable approving this with and accepting that. It is just semantics, it's quite not content. So they don't have to come back all the time with a final letter. You don't have to go with that.
I don't agree, but I will look one for this. I mean, I, I don't think, you probably don't have to come back, you, you sent the document.
That's what I just said.
Yeah. If you make the changes on it, you and I can even talk for that meeting. But I really think it's just a couple of changes. But I don't think, but I think they're gonna wanna go back anyways for all the other stuff you've talked about.
Plus, it's just no fun.
Yeah. Any other feedback on the document itself? Great. Thank you for putting all the energy you could. Yes. So let's go to the second topic is, Connor, you gonna do that one?
Uh, sure, yeah, I can sort of just talk through the slides. Um, this idea came to us, um, and we looked into it next quarter, because we thought it was a really cool idea. Um, the idea being that, you know, we have these sixty-one families participating in a program in Situas. Oh, thank you. Um, and, you know, when you participate in a program in Situas, I guess the state actually is receiving more funds than it costs to educate these students. Um, and we're trying to think of, you know, ways that we can uh allow for these members of our community to feel like fully participating members of our community, not just when they're in the school during the school week. Um, so we've got sixty-one families participating. Uh, from my conversations with the director of Mecca program. His best guess is that there were thirty families that seemed interested, but probably more. Um, but realistically, for the first year that something like this would be in place, probably fifteen families might take advantage. The vision would be maybe that number would grow with time, if there's positive feedback and et cetera, et cetera. Um, the numbers, uh, you know, we sell, I believe it's three hundred and fifty beach stickers to non-residents each year. I think that's two hundred, one hundred and fifty all beach. Uh, and there's over six thousand sold to residents. Our plan is to create some additional parking at the beaches. You know, that's a concern for a lot of residents, especially on holiday weekends in the summer. Um, so hearing that, you know, any additional beach stickers in the system can sometimes raise that concern. So we're proposing that families who are participating in the Mecca program can purchase into a beach sticker at the resident pricing and the resident availability. Meaning, you know, starting the very first day, beach stickers are sold right up till, you know, the last week of August if they decide they wanna come down. They're not boxed out in the way that your average non-resident, uh, would be. Uh, so logistically, I wanna thank, just because of both the Treasury Bike and the T P Police for being very available for conversations, talking through. Um, you know, this would be one sticker per household. Um, the Treasure Collector's Office helps guide that it could be, uh, you know, the vehicle needs to be registered in the name of one of the primary caregivers or the student themselves, if they're older. Um, those individuals will be identified by the Mecca director. They would provide the town with that list of names each year. Um, that list is what the Treasure Collector's Office could go off of. Uh, they would have to come in person. Right now, there isn't like a super easy nibble way to create the online system to work for non-residents in this way. Um, that doesn't mean that in time we couldn't figure that out, but just as far as getting the stuff and running, it would be a good in-person thing to start. Um, yeah, you have to have your vehicle registration and photo ID. Feedback, public safety, no concerns, at the time of our last conversation. Uh, you know, we talked about the parking issue at the Treasure Collector's Office. Um, but giving their input, it was totally a workable situation. And then, oh yeah, even if every family participated, because that was a concern, I started catching conversations around that. Um, you know, we're talking about less than one percent increase in the total number of vehicles with stickers. And the DEI committee in town was, uh, fully in support of this initiative. So that's what it stands for.
Great. Thanks for putting it together. Over for discussion.
I think it's great. I'm really serious, but I think it's a really nice idea. Talked about with the D E I teams, I don't, I don't think there's really any impact to this for a little part there anyway through the weekend, so. Love to welcome these families, give them the opportunity.
And for no issues related to the registration, kind of the interest?
No, I wanna thank Connor for her, um, exactly, she had happened to me a couple of times. And definitely take it in mind. Under advisement, I, I appreciate it. It's a great opportunity. Only thing I was worried, wondering about is, do we wanna keep it? No, not have them come in and say, I met those family, you know, I don't know if there's some other way we can do it to them. I don't know if they would be impressed, I would hope not. But I don't wanna, you know, we, we might have to figure out that situation a little bit. But yeah, unfortunately, they would not be able to, because not since we're residents, they wouldn't be able to do it online. So they would have to come in. But, um, you know, most of you got that. Connor's great, so.
Any serious school idea or something like that? Do they have a school idea?
I mean, I totally get that concern, right? Because like any qualifier ahead of saying I'm just here for beach sticker could be other, right? So even if it's just, I mean, figured out, but even if it's, I'm on the Treasure Collector's beach sticker list. You know, just something like that to deter, that your office to recognize the rollout of our document.
Exactly. Yeah, I'm sure you can figure it out.
While, while we're giving access.
Go ahead.
While, while we're giving access to the, um, to the beaches, I'm gonna pitch this idea again. But the beach sticker, I'd like to see us perhaps add five dollars to positive beach sticker and call it a beach and trail sticker. And allow people to, you know, use our parking lots at our, for our trails. And so, um, I don't know where this, this bureaucracy, I have to get to present that idea that while we're talking about it, there's a lot of other national resources here that I think the Mecca families really enjoy as well. But I think it's wonderful.
Great. So I'll stop the discussion, because I think it's slammed up. And any comments from the audience?
Yes. If you don't mind, Bill, I just read, he just read through it. I was on this vision when it first started, and I'm just so excited to see how it's kind of morphed and changed and grown to introduce the things that are being introduced. What a great idea. Just wait, see when we first started it once we got.
Thanks, Bill. So Connor, I'm gonna leave you and Pam to work out the details of the purchasing of the actual ticket. Um, and if not, can I have a motion to? Is there actual wording or?
There is no written motion at this point, but.
I also like to acknowledge, um, resident Janice Pisa, who brought this idea originally to the board. And to, again, thank Connor and the beach commission for doing this enormous amount of life updates at this point, so. We did well. Um, and I'd like to move to approve the online. Does anybody else have a?
There is no motion. We have to wait in.
I agree. Oh, I love you. Okay. Uh, move to approve the sale of resident beach stickers to our qualified Mecca families, um, as, as presented by the beach commission.
Second one is Connie. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
And we wanna thank you. It, it really, uh, it, uh, it really crosses a line with a lot of things we're trying to do here. I think it's, I think it's a good job, I would say, so, thanks for coming.
Thank you so much. Um, something just more for you all to think about, but it's sort of on our, uh, horizon line is um, beach signs are all in just English. And we were thinking about a certain way to open that without having to repaint signs and everything else. And we thought something as simplistic, QR road sticker. Um, you know, we have sister cities that speak French, Irish Gaelic, Creole. Uh, that can be a cool starting point. And, you know, functionally and practically, how many people would actually maybe need to do that? Not many, but I think it could be a cool cultural teaching tool just for kids, families. Oh, we can hear this in Creole, whatever. Um, that allows you to take a lot of logistical stuff on the backend, to make the web work for that, everything else. But you just wanna put it on your radar. Uh, it's something we wanna look into as well.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
We're talking more about. Almost there.
Kevin, you wanna come up?
Sure.
So you are applying for the Waterways Committee?
Yes.
It's your name and address and why you wanna do it.
Kevin Boden. Eight Sandy Lane, Situas, Mass. I'm a commercial official in the town here. I've been there for twenty-five years. We have a really good group of guys down there. We use Situas Harbor year round. We run our businesses off of here. And I think it's important that one of us is on the waterways. That's our whole livelihood, the waterways. I think we work very well with the town of Situas. We work well with the harbor masters, the police, and everyone else. But, uh, you know, everything changes fast and I think, uh, we have to watch out for our livelihoods. Not, you know, we're not in fear of roots, but, you know, I think it's important right now with the changes in town and suspicion of big part of Situas history. Uh, we have quite a few families making a living on, down there. And, you know, the hopper's a very, very busy place right now. You know, the harbor's a very, very busy place right now. And it's a busier every, every year. So we just want to make sure that for us to be able to continue with our businesses and for safety reasons. You know, there's been some safety concerns for me, especially, I run, I run probably one of the largest boats in Citroen. Coming in and out of the harbor, unloading, uh, the pier, kids, extra voters, spit. There's a lot of stuff that, you know, we're just trying to keep, keep our hands in, so we can do our businesses. But that's what, that's, you know, that's, that's the whole end of it.
Yeah, I was just looking at the, the, the current, I don't, most of these are, are residential.
Back.
People are living there, so I think it's a good idea because you see it from a different perspective. They're maybe, they, uh, with recreations or the recreation world they're in, so.
I think we have two resignations, right? Ryan Craig and Dave Freeman.
Yes, I spoke to Mike Givens, Mr. Chair. He just informed me that Frank Rose was with us today.
Yep.
But he also suggested we have four associate members. And he would like to see, one of them has already put in an application.
Yep.
Tonight that you'll see, to be moved up, Brian Cronin. And then Dave Dunne and TJ Melvesti have been waiting to be moved up, but also haven't received their application yet. So the recommendation, if he chooses to move forward with cannabis, put him as an associate for now, and then move up at the next, okay. Uh, that's a suggestion from Mike Givens that, you know.
Do you know if any of these other four people are commercial fishermen? And no Steve Gardis? David Dunne, TJ, or Steve?
I don't think Steve Gardis is interested in being a full member. There's nothing in the charge of a fisherman.
Is there? Is, is Dee, is anyone else on the three associate members?
I do. I don't think they're fishermen. Uh, but Tucker used to be on it, but I do have a question for Kevin because of that. So Tucker was on it and he couldn't attend quite often because of his work schedule.
It's, yeah, it's.
So it's tough. So I just want to, you know, make sure that.
It's nice to be at a hospital.
Yeah, you wouldn't really be able to attend.
We don't have the, we don't have the best hours, so I don't, I definitely have to work on it, but it is, it's an important piece of our business.
I think you can, I mean, I'll see that you may not be able to meet every meeting, but at least if you can take the majority of them.
I'm, I'm on two or three different boards that I make regularly, so I make it work. I make it work.
Any other, uh, opening up for questions? Any other questions? Eric, you have any questions?
No, I, I agree that having your voice at the forefront of the fishing industry is kind of waiting to be more hardcore than this. As the world features out there, I don't know why.
I think more specifically, pointing with, if Craig is retired, and also, I think it's my mind suddenly that it's important to have a vote as well as a loss. So I would, I would lean towards actually being, as opposed to an associate. And because one leaves out, if it's still moving on, you want to be able to talk.
I was gonna say, Mr. Chair, could we, uh, table any decisions to wait until Lorraine gets some feedback and some of the other associates to see what their intent is? Because if, if we promote them to a, a full.
What they told, what they told me is their intent is to apply their full membership.
It is. Okay. I thought you said we were driving.
Well, I have received an application. What they say and what they do might be two different things.
So to that, to that point, maybe we should just wait to really see what the intent is, so we put Kevin from our place. If we are so inclined, we'll just wait.
Yeah, right. So why don't we, as we did with the other article, you see, why don't we wait one meeting? And see if anybody else wants to come in and apply, and then at that point, we'll, we'll consider your position as well. Okay. Yeah, we, do you have any, any comments or any?
I don't know. I, you know, this is, uh, it's all kind of new to me, but I guess I'm on a lot of boards. This seems like one I'm kind of missing the boat of. Like, you know what I mean? I, I should be on the one. In Citroen Harbor, I'm on, I'm on one in Boston, I'm on Boston. I should be on the one in Citroen.
I think we're just a welcome to ours, and I think the board will want and need and wish that, so. Okay, thanks for coming. All right, thank you. So we're not going to go tonight. Okay, so we are now on special town meeting warrant articles. Nancy Cole, Lady control.
Mr. Chair, it's okay with the one that we take. She's got Austin.
Well, you got something to add?
You've got a gun. Thank you.
I know your daughter's stupid, I should.
Come on down, right. Thank you.
So Article 14 on the special town meeting is legislation move for retired police officers.
Correct. So basically, this is just looking to make a change whereby right now, age 65 officers don't allow for eligible to work. And are basically going to retire. We have a number of officers right now who have to retire from the department. Some are under 65. We have a couple who are over 65, and through special, who are verified by now by the governor, are able to work. This legislation basically allows those officers to continue to work around age of seven. And it's really kind of three different things to look at. One is, we need the bodies. These are officers who are well-trained, have a wealth of knowledge and experience, so they're kind of ready to be there to continue to bust success. With the legislation that came through with post, we're seeing on the other side a reduction in younger officers coming in. So previously, we've been able to tap those new officers. That's not there. So this helps to fill that void. And the other thing really is, it's a great transition piece for the officers. After you've spent 32 years with the department, it's really kind of that family. It's, it's what you know. Maybe all of a sudden, just kind of walk away from that, with my personal officers that we have continue there. It's a great way to stay in touch with people that you've spent decades with. You know, they might only come in one day, we can work the detail, but it's still a good connection point. And allows us really, you know, keep those MEKO officers around and communicate with the younger officers. There are still things with this in terms of 1,200 hour half as part of the retirement board, so that wouldn't go away. They won't be able to work for those 1,200 hours. But the document here kind of spells out some of the other things regarding the 111 F. And really, we're touching a policy of service rules for retirement goals in terms of that 65 now.
And you should pick it 62 now or 65?
65.
So it'd be five additional years. And the cost of this is not impacting the town because the details pay.
Correct. And it's, it's the same rate that they follow through, just as they are right now. It's covered in our bargaining agreement as far as what the rate is. They're covered under our policy and procedures, and it's Citroen officers. So they're the ones who aren't really here familiar with what, what they're doing. And there are a couple of things spelled out in this medical exam and things like that, that it would just be for the officers to do. But it's really a discretion of January's reporting authority, and it would be officers who are good standing in the public department.
And your department manages the details that they get as, as a.
Exactly. And again, it falls with our collective bargaining agreement, so full-time officers are still taking, you know, getting first on the list and these officers go.
Questions for Chief?
Yes, sir.
I have lots of questions. Does this help us in any way with the issue related to the summer event that, that maybe is?
As, as it sits right now, not really. I mean, this is really for in October.
Yeah.
I would think that we could use them for special events and things like that, that is primarily targeted towards, you know, that pizza great pay. So that's where it is for a lot of, for the structure and very vast things. That's, I was just in the meeting earlier today, and every community is basically the same kind of situation where crews need to work, be, be able to be keeping these projects, but by the same time, that makes sure that most of the communities cover.
Well, because it hurts me that if we could get more, uh, more, if we could backfill the problem we've got with the special event officers for summer with this people.
And so one of the challenges that you have, even right now, we have two special officers who are working. They're basically doing so on their special rule, but because they're civil service, they can work from May 1st until September 13th. So normally, or in different set up, we would hopefully work them year round, in this case, from September 13th. Those couple of officers that you have will want to be a per. And that's basically some sort of status.
Eric?
But the only thing that's not coming back to me is, in, under this category, will the officers still be able to continue to do the retirement or are they capped out already?
Right.
Because that's a different, that's a different problem.
Right. They're already retired, which, so because they're retired, they're capped on how many hours, on how much income they can earn.
Okay.
Well, top of the question.
So, um, we're not going to vote it right now. We're going to go through all the other ones, but thank, I don't think I have any questions. Do you have any hesitation to at all, any comments?
No, not at all. This is something that other communities have this, so it's really something for us to come along to talk about and know a little bit more on this conversation.
Great. Thanks, Mark.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Nancy, is the intention to go through article by article, or what do we, or are we not, we're just going down one?
It's completely up to you. Um, Lorraine prepared a motion for, if you wanted to do one through four, you know, if you do the review of that. In 1914, or you can.
I'll tell you what, one, I. Yeah, I'm going to run through them, and if you guys have questions, then we can, I mean, some of them are no brain, so. Does anyone have any questions on, on one side of the law treatment plan? Two, the unpaid bills?
We have three, yeah.
What?
We have three bills.
Three unpaid bills. Number three, the balancing reconciliations. Standard, or a lot of them. Number four, more transfers to reserves. Capital improvement.
They're coming before you next meeting.
Right. Close skip five. C P C.
They're coming before you next meeting.
Right.
I did, I did. And except for the beach, the moneymask, they're all some existential. And even when you think about a moneymask, that's wrong, because if we incorporate the money at the town meeting in the spring, we won't be able to spend the money until July 1st, which is, you know, party beach season. So, um, yeah, but I had a long talk with Dan about the issues that he raised.
Um, seven, they're 24, as I said.
Yes.
Eight, same as that. Lots of pictures.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chair. They did remove the common driveway article under there. I talked to them and they had a discussion that they're needing, and they basically decided that it was probably too complicated to bring up those special town meetings, so they're only bringing the two that are sort of housekeeping, that they're trying to reconcile graphs with language, and I think they, they are coming in. So thanks for the issues as well.
Good. So that's just Article 7 to me.
Article. Seven, eight.
Yeah, maybe certainly by law, designed to do.
And they took out one of the articles that related to common driveways, so instead of having three articles, they have two.
Number nine was the charter review. We still set that. Any questions on that? Number 10, um, the revolving fund. 11, open auction acceptance.
We already accepted, we just re-accepted.
We're just flipping all that in there.
Suppose if we wanted to take our OPAP money and invest it in the state. As opposed to keeping ourselves. Sounds like enough, but they changed the laws and we have to do it again.
Say that. Nancy, why don't you say that?
I can make such a statute in 2011 and they revised it in 2016, so you're required to re-accept the statute.
And what does the statute say?
Um, if it's on other, the interoperability of trust, and who can invest it and how it can be invested.
So it's just the investment number?
It's the whole step of the trust. I have a good idea to try to make that.
Any questions on that? So it sounds like bookkeeping. Brooks Street easement. Does someone know that of us?
So there's town property, when you go down the driveway off First Parish, into the old secret center to the left, this town property on the park. What we're looking for, getting, getting an easement to get down, to get into that property, we have to get between the park and into town, so it's still, still licensed that property.
When we sold the property, they signed an agreement to give us an easement.
Oh, they're giving us.
Yes. And they, and we're looking for, and we're looking for that information, there's a map.
Is that water supply protection? Is that why we had it?
It was, we didn't even realize it when we put up for sale, that the auctioneer mentioned this, that we were going to landwalk ourselves, if you weren't to do something about that. So it seemed like a good idea that we want to do something about that, just in case you ever want to ask us. Yeah, but it was an issue. We owned the property for a hundred years.
Maps is solved, solved. I'm paying a lot of questions. Yep. 13, so those 12 and 13 is on the other, right? Well, acceptance of the easement on Brooks Street.
The street's different.
This border.
Oh, this is border shoots, sorry, yes.
I guess I'm going to negotiate with these.
We have a plan. It's on the council. You're supposed to be drafting this. It's the neighbors that gives a path into, from the property that we bought into the conservation area in the back. So we're going to construct a pathway to access the rest of the property behind the Brooks Street property.
That was the neighbor that she lived with in the meeting?
Yes, yes. So there's clothes too, and they've both given verbal agreements, we do not have written agreement as yet, but it's anticipated to happen in time to special.
And how much does that open it up to? What age it just got there?
Forty-eight years of law.
It's impossible.
Yeah, yeah, which is already a trail. Yeah, it's really, it might, it's hard to, it's hard to get in there. And there's no, no parking to not access that. Right, my, yeah, there are problems, but this will only provide the parking area and access.
Any questions on that? That's the last one. Um, do we want to actually vote on this?
This gentleman calls for you to vote on this, with the exception of the articles that will be presented to you in the next meeting.
Why don't we just run off?
Well, just wait till the team will move on.
Yes, there's a lot of candidates. You can do it, you can do it.
I mean, if I could rattle them all. All right. So, is that a list of them?
I, I, I'm focusing on one. Lorraine, give you a bit.
So we have one through four, and nine through 14.
Yeah, I put it on here in the motion, and it's in front of you on the, on the desk. It's, uh, Articles 1 through 4, 9 through 14.
Yes.
It's just 1 through 5.
I know. I just switched it to four because Nancy pulled up capital.
Did we have any other? Did we just say it? Is that a second one you just said? Looking at, uh, capital improvement and.
So we're, we're pulling out 5.
So it's 1 through 4?
Yes.
We're pulling out Article 5.
Yeah, perfect. So can I have a motion to vote in favor of Articles 1 through 4 and Articles 9 through 14? For the special town meeting on September?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Which areas? Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Lorraine. Okay, now, new business, we've got a discussion goes for some one-day liquor license. I have a motion for black, uh, a motion for black apron on Citroen Madison Center on 7:30, 2022, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM for a private event. Second, by Mr. Goodman, all in favor?
Aye.
I have a motion for a benefit, along this at 2, 3, 4, Chief Justice Cushion Highway, on 8:05, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM for fundraiser following a golf tournament.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If you have a motion for each coal club at Alene's Harbor side on 8:04, from 6:30 till 10:00 PM for a private event.
Yeah, they were, when they already get a coal club, I don't.
Yes, they're on the first sheet.
My best, I just do regulars to the.
Second, I.
Yeah.
So.
We're coming, Mr. Goodman, second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Mary's.
She's the one that's applying for her state license carry.
Oh, okay. Thank you, the.
Yeah, it's still in progress, so we have to have it continue to do the one days until it's approved.
Thank you.
So now we'll get to, uh, if we want to make any of these appointments or not, um, just either. So now we'll get to, uh, if we wanna make any of these appointments or not, um, this evening, we have, uh, Susan Pope, who is applying for one position on council aging.
I, I think I have to get services here, I've, I've had a pleasure of working with her for years. She really, yeah, she, she knows, two thirds of the town are ready to, to, yeah. Like a motion?
Please.
Move to appoint Susan Pope to the council of aging for a term of three years or until a successor is named, and then completion of conflict of interest law online training program is completed within thirty days, so.
Second, on Mr. Goodrich, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Um, Sister Cities Sousy Engrine. Um, he had Patrick Cannon come in, um, there's one opening.
Yeah, there was another applicant as well, but that applicant is really interested in the, uh, Kate Verde. Uh, seat, so I thought Patrick would be great for this seat, and the other candidate for the, um, Kate Verde's.
And these has all been posted, right, 'cause I, I've talked to them, maybe people over the years, and they're like, I wanna do that, I wanna do that, and then they never.
I have a Facebook post. Yeah, they have attention, in the Mariner and on the Facebook page, I'm on the website.
There's a. Yeah.
Yeah. And after this go around, I'll be posting another, I'm waiting for all of the renewals to come back.
Mm-hmm.
I've been chasing those, which is very time sweet.
So, not for this, but for, for all spots, do you think we should, should we wait, or should we go?
These are fine.
Okay.
I have no, I'm not waiting for renewals except the ones I found out about today on Waterways, 'cause I just found out about that on Waterways.
Yeah.
Any comments on Patrick?
Having the other generation ready for it.
They're, I think, Kevin, that's a great point there. More like a motion.
Move to appoint Patrick Cannon to the Sisters City France Committee, for a term of three years or until a successor's named, and completion of conflict of interest law online training program is completed within thirty days, second.
Second, on Ms. Campfield, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, I'm gonna skip, uh, wait, we're, we're, we're gonna put a hole on Waterways. So Kevin Norton will wait, and then we have one spot for these three applicants. Before we vote tonight, does, does anybody wanna wait to think about it, or be in a meeting to think about it? Or?
I have a, I have a second opinion, I don't know, there's only one citizen that is disabled at all.
This community, it's not really.
It's a funny debate.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really to solve existing problems, not, I mean, they're talking about really planning board stuff in terms of bigger picture, so traffic seems to be more like.
Probably also supposed to stop slowly.
There is one citizen that is on there already, Dottie Cook, this would be like a seventh citizen. Al Baker was on there, and was chair for many years, but he's resigned from the company, so it's got a vacant spot for a while. Who, what about Dottie? I mean, she, she's still on there.
Who's the?
But we have, uh, we just sort of went out.
So there are two residents?
Yeah, Dottie Cook and, um, basically, yeah, right.
Well, Dottie, she was a.
Right, she.
Yes, she, yeah, she knows.
Yeah.
Always.
Yeah, she's, she's done.
So is this opening just a, an existing opening, that's another?
Yes, citizen opening, you have Sister Fire on there, uh, Taylor Billings, with police, Sean Park, who was here, and Dottie.
This says that, this says that Dottie's term expires in twenty twenty-three as well.
So who's?
Correct.
Oh, it's twenty twenty-two, correct. I know, I'm probably quiet.
Well, I have that open, who's the voting numbers on that?
There are voters.
There are voters.
So it, is the two liaisons, am I a voting member, and?
Oh, no, you're not voting.
Oh, liaison.
People I just mentioned are voting.
There's an issue here.
I thought the board, I thought the chair was, no, okay.
How do you get the street to suggest?
Yeah, that's fine.
It's not for Catherine's eye, Taylor Billings.
Taylor Billings. Bill's.
So we.
See, that would be five, and Dottie Cook.
So we don't wanna hide, I mean, we don't wanna need to.
Yeah, so we need the.
That's why we need one, we need five.
Okay, perfect. What's some other, other, you know, if you have not voting numbers?
No, there are no citizens.
Well, I'm wrong, so there really are two citizen representatives, Dottie's a citizen representative too, she's just not up.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this on hold for next meeting as well, and you guys can figure about it, and do whatever.
Do we, um, do you wanna hold off on Brian as well from Waterways? He, he is an associate member, he has expressed interest to move up to a full member.
Oh, right.
Which would still leave one full member to consider, kept for, as we go through all of that earlier question.
I mean, did you wanna change the charge for the Waterways Commission, to say something about one membership of the commission? Or do you wanna just leave that?
How, what, what is that, please, let me figure that out. Why don't we, why don't we hold Brian's off, that'll be kind of suggesting, well, let's see the whole landscape.
No, I was, I was hoping we could just ask, vote on it to money, but that's okay, we can hold up.
Yeah, let's, let's figure out the whole landscape next week and, and do.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, are we do, doing these on the ones?
Yes.
Move to.
Go ahead.
Move to reappoint Suzanne Brennan and Margaret Stone to the Community Preservation Act Committee, for a term of three years or until a successor is named, and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within thirty days, on the set.
Second.
Um, just further discussion on this, so I say this every year, do we know if new people wanna get on this yet?
There are many, uh, interesting pieces.
So, so we've posted it, and no one else has asked to be?
Well, I haven't posted openings, 'cause there are.
Well, I think that's the, like, you're not automatically the new.
Right, correct, that's why you're voting, voting.
Right, but I'm saying, we're voting the renewals before we see if new people wanna get involved.
I first post, anybody who's interested in any positions, please submit your application, like, I have a lot of for Conservation Commission, mine received none for CPC. Even though there are no openings on.
Do you guys wanna say?
I actually do, yeah, yeah.
So, do we wanna vote, like, if we?
Yes, because she's indicated to us that she has already sent the open request, to say, does anybody want to apply to CPC, blah, blah, blah.
Nobody's.
I mean, I would say specifically CPC.
No, I said, right.
All boards and committees.
Right.
Yeah, these are the ones we have openings on, as well. I mean, you know, we have to talk about do we wanna change the process, or what do we wanna say?
Was it gone, right, for submitting your application?
Yes.
So, i- if, if, if no one has applied for an application for CPC, then if the, if they watch renewal, unless we have some issue, right?
Yeah.
Um, and if people haven't responded by the deadline, I feel so it might be considered not kosher to go out and try to eat the pushes, in order to get a couple more applications, so that we can then.
No, yeah, and that's, that's not the intent, the tenures, we don't want people not to apply because they think that people are just gonna get renewed. Do you know what I'm saying, so?
Or, I'm not even sure if they would know that, they have the call.
Well, that's, I have a question for Suzanne, I have a question for Paul, so I think you bring up a good point. So, Lorraine, when you post.
And you also have a six-year rule, these people have not even been on for six years, they want to make three-year.
Just let Kevin ask, yeah.
Um, when you post open positions, do you include the renewal options that's open?
No. I say, these are, I say, these are all the boards and committees.
That's the issue.
No, I say, these are all the boards and committees, I can link to all the board and committee pages. I say currently, we have open positions on these committees, and I list the committees that we have open positions on.
Right, so what's the definition of an open position?
I'm just gonna say, I get applications for every committee.
Can we just answer the question, what's the definition of an open position, and I think that's to your point, what we're trying to.
The definition for the open position is I have open positions on those boards and committees.
Somebody has resigned, or someone has timed out the date.
Right, and it's an.
Right, but to Tony's point, if there's somebody in there that's, it's their first, and trust me, I'm not already a Rose Suzanne May. It's semantics, it's a process, it's, if somebody has served three years, they shouldn't automatically get an option to renew. We should post that as anything that's up for renewal should be considered in open position.
Yeah, that's changing what we've done in the past, since I've been here ten years, I'm happy to change that.
Yeah, I've mentioned it every, uh.
Yeah, every year, I, I'm a twenty at this one, it's definitely.
Yes. And I, again, it has nothing to do with any person or any committee, I just.
Yeah, I agree with you, yeah. This is a very cha, just, it's a very challenging process, we had to, over two hundred spots.
Yeah, I just think if, if, uh, I, I think to Morris' point a second ago, we just said there's openings on all of this, you know, not just, because somebody may say, you know what, I really don't, well, there is, because
But there is.
this person isn't locked into the next term.
I'm not saying there, there is, but there's some committees that don't expire for two more years.
Right, I'm saying everyone, they.
That there's nobody up for renewal this year, so there would not be any openings on the.
Right, so that one we wouldn't say, but for instance, uh, some of these.
So, what, what you're asking me to do is list every single committee where people are expired, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's what I'm suggesting, that.
Okay, would you like to start that this year?
Uh, I'm talking to the board about it right now, so I'll let you.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, what, what are your guys' thoughts on, to get a?
Well, I've recommended me forward to make an adjustment, because she's already gone through the process, but I completely agree, I mean, there's this assumption that because they have an option to renew, that they're bought that, that we don't even consider other applicants, which was, which. All right, discourages younger, you know, new people from coming forward, 'cause they see the same old people sitting there, so.
I would say, just saying that that is not true, because we have the Conservation Commission, for example, three or four candidates uh, that would like to be considered, and there's only one C B A.
It doesn't.
It's got a C B A.
And I, I, so I would say, Tony, moving forward, just in order not to have to leave that process, this is. No, that's already has been.
Yes, we. Any other thoughts?
Uh, I, I agree, I think moving, I think moving on just all of what's been down already, but even just being, you know, supposed to be clear on, you know, there's spots open for CPC, even if someone's has been on or renewed, so it's like another position that might be, it should be considered open, moving forward. Next, in the next round, and even how we're sending it out, I mean, we sent an email out, I know we, we did the newspaper and other stuff, how was listed our way? Not just all the boards, the year, but CPC has three, you know, whatever it is, to make sure those folks are, along with that.
Well, then I would ask, um, in that case, if, if we're advertising that there are openings because their term's expiring, then I would think we would want to give the person whose term is expiring the opportunity to come in and talk to us.
Yeah. Yeah.
And right, right now, we don't, if they, they've asked us to, if they want to renew, we just, they don't have to come in. So I'm, I'm just going to suggest to the board that, that we, you know, more interviews to do, which is fine, but.
This is the letter that goes out, so you can edit it however you like, and we can, um, set.
The letter goes out to?
Everybody in this town.
Yeah, so I think, uh, it's just a, a technical point now, that you're lis, you're listing and saying, okay, all these people who are renewing, I'm not gonna put an opening on that board, so all it would probably be is probably eight more dots here that says, hey, you can be on CPC also, or whatever, I don't know what we're talking about, sorry, right?
There's one group that looks like it's twenty twenty-four year on mass, is that Sousy Engrine?
Well, the Kate Verde exists, I think it's a brand new committee, so.
Sousy?
There are no current members.
Well, there was a.
The Sousy Engrine one, she's saying, yeah, that's probably the exception, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so, does that make sense, Lorraine, moving forward, that we've just, we would list the committees even if there's just renewing people?
If you'd like to do that, would you like to start that this year?
No, I don't, I don't think, I don't know, what's, what's it, set some action, we've already posted it.
I already expressed my opinion, no.
Okay, so wait next, wait the next year, the next year.
Yeah, I mean, I'll still give you all the applicants that are received, even for committees where people are renewing, because I have a lot of those too.
So do you have applicants for CPC?
No, I do for Conservation, C B A, lots of other ones, we don't have any applicants received.
Okay, so yeah, we, we wanna look at those, when those, when those, uh, appointments go.
It's a motion on the table, right?
Yeah, in the second.
Yes, you say N M A, did anybody second it?
Yeah. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Who has?
I'm sorry if I made a motion, I, I made, I remember, okay, I see, I see it, yeah, okay.
Okay, so we did CPC, now you're doing animal control?
And I don't think there are people begging to be on the school.
I'm more, I'm more than willing to give it up.
Yes.
Yeah, I did, that's somewhat.
Really?
I did.
I would be shocked if there weren't dog park people that are already on it, but.
I've sent a letter to all the dog park people, all the animal shelter people, we have not received one application.
Hey, move to reappoint Carol Self and him and Gilbert Road, Kevin Capery, to the Animal Control Board. For a term, is it one year or two years?
Three years.
Okay, I don't see a good motion, so I'm making a, oh, there they are, so, um, for a term of three years, or until a successor is named, and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within thirty days, second.
Second, on Mr. Goodrich, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. It's unanimous, five to zero. Missions on disability.
Is that reappointed? Athena?
Yes, she's reappointed.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, move to reappoint Athena Bratsky to the Commission on Disabilities, for a term of three years or until a successor is named, and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within thirty days, second.
Second, on Mr. Goodrich, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
It's like, this is, he's certain, oh, he's next to you, he gets the hand in.
Second, two, he said. Yeah. And the pension services.
Someone resigned.
They're still working it out, they're still.
We need to reappoint Joseph Kelly and Ed Keller to the Veteran Service Advisory Council for a term of three years, or until a successor is named, and completion of conflict of interest law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Did you say two years or three?
A term of three years.
Three years.
Second.
Second, on Ms. Curran, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
So Keller resigned from that, okay. Yeah, no.
Okay, other business now, any immediate sudden reports?
Hi, Juan.
More.
Um, just to bring you up to date before home housing trust, um, as you know, uh, we own a lot on Stockbridge Road, if you remember that. Um, and the developer who is, uh, looking to develop that driftway, right, um, the Vanguard's asked them, you know, to, um, consider, um, you know, formal housing opportunities, so they actually partnered with the Corporation for the Independent Living, um, and working through using that property as housing for, um, adults, um, and adults in the elderly facility. Um, it's just nice, um, we have a couple of times to go to and to be in a sufficient, that's condition, as I'm to that, you know, so. It's all boards and committees, it's a free, it's how it is. You know, sort of being this, a nice location for some.
Condos?
Right.
Condos?
No, it's, um, independent living facility, so it'd be like five hundred rooms, it's, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, four of, like, sort of group.
Exactly, yeah, like group home, yeah.
The thing about group homes, it's, David, it's.
It's a unit, for a unit, yeah.
What, six point one one three?
Yeah.
All right, any, did you have a liaison?
I do, um, with more of the, uh, Shellfish Advisory Committee is very close to having lots for, um, deep water, and they're going out to the applicants who applied last year, giving them a free lease essentially, to decide whether they want to reset that, and at some point, not too distant future, they would like to come back to, you know, this port to move that process through. So they've asked, we put on our agenda, I suggested to the Chair that we do it after twenty, um, I don't think it's gonna materially affect the, you know, the, the growing season or whatever, so I thought that was, for sure, because they can move forward, so the, they can have. Cause they can move forward, still have a chance, they can have, uh, Department of Marine Fisheries, uh, come in, and so, uh, she says they're close to having an undisputed area and proposal. So, good news.
Great, let's see some.
Undisputed area, yes, great. But we're still gonna get something to turn to help, yes. Something?
Yep.
Just making it, it can smell. Um, oh yes, um, good news on the, Jim mentioned it earlier, the, uh, P O forty-four, uh, committee, we got eight really good proposals, very good proposals. Uh, and we approved of this grant and picked, I don't know if I need to describe it from choosing, but three, uh, companies are being interviewed this week, we did one today, we're doing two, two on Thursday, then we'll be, we'll try to get together and think about what the best way to notice, but I would say we're very lucky that proposals have done.
Will you be giving them, like, a legendary sort of goal on the projects during the interview?
We haven't, we haven't gotten there yet, but, um, it's one of the questions we're asking them is, you know, if, if, if they come. This is probably gonna have to be a multi-part financing program, because I really doubt that we're gonna be able to do what really should be done with that site and do it well, and do it with the resiliency, uh, factored in, and the resiliency can cost a lot of money. Um, but the group we talked to today actually brought up the goal to funding and said that they have had, uh, success working with other committees on putting together funding, uh, proposals and grant proposals, and, uh, you know, I'm hoping we're gonna get similar feedback from the other groups, but they seem particularly strong in understanding that, you know, we're probably gonna need to package this in some way to get the amount of financing, we probably, um, I know this is the city of Austin, but there was a story in the blog last week about a company, uh, plaza being redeveloped, that's a two acre parcel, I thought it was much bigger. Two acre parcel is twelve, fifteen million dollar. Not to do that, um, and they don't have some of the issues that we have on the square, so like, but it, it can be expensive, but you know, obviously, they know we're gonna have to give them budget parameters, cause we can't build Taj Mahal on there. So.
Have they, the big concept, like, what's the concept?
That's what they will.
It's an open space, it's just all a little park.
Park, hopefully, well.
Well, there, there may be a small amenities building on it, probably like a restroom and maybe a, you know, a little visitor center or something, but you know, one of the things that we, we talked about today and we'll talk about is that we have concerns about parking, that we don't have a lot of parking, so as much as we may want all free down there, it's not gonna happen. Uh, but they seem to be used, used to work in this group today with these very challenging sites and being very creative about how you use them, and all of the proposals pointed out that this is, uh, an entryway from having the road into the harbor and, you know, how much that matters to us, and then we don't want there to be some big brick wall put up that would disturb the view, so, uh, again, I, eight proposals, I mean, they have, what, seventeen or eighteen companies coming? And to have eight companies, a lot of work, I mean, these are really, and they're all oriented toward communications, community input, and all the stakeholders, having meetings, virtual meetings, you know, and, and not trying to force anything on them, you know.
Mr. Chair, I think, um, I, uh, I think it's important for us all to engage Steve Vaughn and state what they're doing at the Jericho Park, so.
I specifically mentioned that today.
Oh, good.
I get, I, because it's important, I said, it's very important to us that whatever they're doing over there, that it speaks to what we are planning, and they see, this particular group today extremely well connected with the harmony process and all the state agencies and all of the stakeholders need to go. And one of the things they said is that they would not propose something that couldn't be permitted. So they're, they're, they're engineers, but they're also designers, so they understand.
We're even to make the look.
Yes.
For C P C, so before the state starts anything.
Well, and I mentioned today, we've got a bandstand at Old Parkway that's letting, sort of, raise their bases, that's falling down, and so, you know, we may wanna think about, do we do that, I mean, there are a lot of uses, but, but, this was, I was very impressed.
Seeing Melissa, some of those firms, I've never felt more comfortable. Seeing some of the other projects and how, and, yeah, some of those areas. All those different firms, just fabulous.
Yeah. But they're all excited about this project very good, so, and they can help us to set us up for where we can go for funding, all for that.
Great, any other, oh, just, well, this is more in correspondence, what's our name?
Maureen. Um, I don't know if I, Cedar Point, I met with the Cedar Point Association, Dave Ball, and, uh, other, other folks that were down there. And just a reminder that we get sent a, or we had sent a letter to, uh, President Lynch, and there was a request, um, talking about C walls and support from the Army Board, if possible, since we'll have new representation in this board, certainly not today, with maybe determination, but we will, to write a similar letter of support to our new representative, uh, in some way, they can show support. Group ass.
Well, and actually, we, and we did talk in our last meeting about, um, wanting to make sure that when we approach any of our professional delegation or state representatives, that, that we have a very specific asks, including, if, if we wanna ask them to try to put some pressure on Army Corps of Engineers, that would be helpful, but we have, I think we have to be that specific.
Yes, yep. That's fair.
Chair?
Uh, I think the board is aware, and I just wanted to let folks know that, uh, last Friday, Miss Cal Roy's last day is a very critical point of development, and that position is being viewed by the administrator and the interim department to determine the job description, it's still what we need, give a recommendation for us to that position, of course, most.
Yeah, I don't remember from the last meeting, but we did have a, a, a water meeting, once, a plant meeting. Uh, that was, um, so, so, good community outreach, advancing the plan, and I'll answer all the questions that the, uh, the residents in the Citizens House.
They will be back fully one more time for top days.
Yeah.
Probably the twenty third.
And hopefully, the beginning of the meeting, we talked about brown water, just emphasizing for the summer.
I got the moderator, um, for the meeting, she's very.
Yeah. Maureen, in correspondence?
I don't think so.
Okay. Can I have approval of the meeting minutes?
Move to accept the minutes, it's like we're meeting not till twelve, it's about two.
Okay, second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Grab a motion to adjourn and sign documents.
So move.
Thank you.
Second, Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.